Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brookline School Committee meeting for March 25th, 2021. And welcome. As always, we have a full agenda, and so I think we'll start right in with consent agenda. I would move the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dimitri. And do we have comments, questions? I'm not seeing any. Okay, so we'll take it up then. Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Who else do I have here? Dimitri?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David's not here yet. Mariah?
Yes.
And I said Andy. Who am I missing? Who haven't I called up? Helen, did I call you? Yeah, I did. And I vote, I vote yes as well. Seven, eight, wait, I have eight names down. Who did I not write down that I called?
It is.
Did the chair vote?
Chair voted. I voted yes.
Well, David's not here, so.
David's not here. Right. Okay, okay, thank you. Claire, you're up.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone. My name is Claire Galian, and I'm the school committee student representative. There's so much going on at BHS right now, the transition back to four days a week, and soon five days. Our early releases getting canceled, pool testing starting up, et cetera. Tonight, I want to focus on a very pressing issue, though, Cypress Field. If you didn't know, like many high schoolers didn't until last week, Cypress Field is going to be closed for 18 months for its renovation. First off, high school students were given no notice or voice in this decision, a decision that affects all of us deeply. Tonight, I hope to advocate for our student body and call upon the school committee to support us in postponing the construction on Cypress. As more students are being ushered into the building for more days a week, the high school is running out of room. Classes are getting cozy with lots of kids, and the open windows invite the sweet sounds of construction. In between classes, we're told to take a mask break outside, and during lunch, we sit outside in the early spring weather with our friends, who we only really see a couple times a week. Where do we do that? On Cypress Field. That field is a pillar of our community at BHS, especially during COVID. It's where music classes, gym classes, sports teams, and kids meet to try to recreate a sliver of the connections we got to have pre-COVID. To take away our fields when we've already lost so much is a disaster for the student body. Where are we supposed to go during lunchtime? Where is band supposed to go? Today, in music collective, we got pushed off the field and had to play next to a dumpster, not to mention the addition of even more construction noise. I don't know if any of you have been to BHS recently, but the noise is relentless, disturbs class, and makes music classes impossible. When we all received an email informing us of Cypress Field's closing, the BHS government jumped into action. I put together a petition to gauge the interest of postponing construction, and it currently has almost 500 signatures from students, teachers, and other community members. Here are some comments from signers. "I couldn't think of a worse time to take this crucial BHS outdoor gathering space offline. It makes no sense. Put the project off until at least the summer when school is out, and by the fall, hopefully, kids will be able to eat lunch in the cafeteria again," said Samara Kaufman. Josephine Selmey said, "Because we need the Cypress Field more than ever this year, that's where kids can actually be with people and conversate. It doesn't make any sense taking away the Cypress Field if many kids use it when it's nice out and forced to eat outside, and that's where we hang for our mask breaks." Adrian Seeger said, "The idea of postponing the renovation of Cypress Field, which has already been delayed by a full year due to budget shortfalls, was initially appalling to me. However, I've changed my opinion on the issue after intense deliberation with my peers. I understand that as the weather warms and more students return to school, the field will play an integral role in the school community. This year, kids have lost so much, and frankly, we haven't really complained a ton. It's hurtful to the BHS student body that this decision is being pushed forward without any consideration of the students' voices. We've already started to feel the effects of Cypress being closed, but with the addition of five days a week in person, we haven't seen the worst yet. That's why tonight, I want to formally ask school committee members what their stance is on this issue, and encourage them to help us take a stand to protect Cypress Field and the student body until the end of this school year." Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I think we'll come back to that. Unless, Jim, if you wanted to say something, I know that you were part of the letter with Erin.
Yeah, Erin, I mean Claire, sorry. Per usual, you know, you hit the right notes, the right buttons, and all that good stuff. It was, I'm certain, a difficult situation for Erin and DPW and her whole area. The planning had been underway for a long time. She tried to make some accommodations with the high schools, you may have seen, where sectioning off some pieces of the property so that students would be able to use that. There's no real 100% solution to a dilemma like that, and the field needed to be done to ease the pandemic hits of all time, and the planning was underway. So I think they tried to reach some compromise and try to come together on it, where benches will be provided, and there'll be outdoor areas, and some of the streets will be closed down. And a difficult situation for sure, Claire, but the town officials and your headmaster and assistant headmaster work really hard to try to find, is there a middle ground that we can make this work? So we definitely understand what you're saying, and I think the people who work at that school would share a lot of your thoughts. In fact, I would say a lot of us share your thoughts around that. But the larger issue, I suppose, is a renovation. It's actually going to take a couple of years before that renovation is done, and they delayed it last year. So I don't have a good answer for you, except to say, per usual, that you raise issues that are real issues, and so bringing them through your leadership as the representative of your school is admirable, even though you're probably not going to get the answer you would love to have. But nevertheless, your ability to have your voice count as to, in a very articulate way, I might say, you do your homework, and you present the students' positions in a way that gets everybody's attention, and quite frankly, makes me squirm sometimes because I say, oh my goodness, she's right on the money, and I don't have an answer for her. So keep, keep up the good work, and I wish, I wish that we could just say everything is going to be on hold, but really, I don't believe that's going to happen. But I'm going to have a conversation with your principal about this because he cares as well, and also with Erin Gallantine, so she can hear the voice as well. So thank you, Claire. That's basically all I can say about that.
And I do, I do know that a head of school, Meyer, is, you know, thinking about, you know, graduation and how that might look and how they may make accommodations, because that's certainly an important time for everybody. And so, again, we ask for your patience with that, and we'll keep, we'll keep the conversation going. I walk by there every day, Claire, so I see it. You know, today I said, oh my goodness, not only were they taking trees down, and they were, the band was trying to practice on, on the grass there. And then I go to the pool, and the pool is, now they're starting to break down some walls in that area over there. So it's like, oh, and then you've got all the construction going. It's like, oh my goodness. So it is, it is hard. I do appreciate that. Thank you. Helen?
I do sympathize with you, the students, the teachers, everybody. A construction zone is not a great place to, to be in, and it's hard and all that. I know that Susan Wolf-Ditkoff was also involved with Dr. Merini in trying to negotiate some, you know, allowances that I think you can see that are there now. They thought they were taking over everything, so fortunately, we got some back. But one thought I had is, there is green space on Welland Road. I know it's not, you know, like the front of the school, but it is green space and quieter than, than the front. Is that used at all?
Can I respond to that? Okay.
This is a conversation.
Okay.
Public comment, so it's okay.
Well, yeah, actually, I've been talking a lot with Dean Poon about that, and I know, like, school council's been talking about it. That space is not really used right now, but they're hoping to utilize it more. The issue is that a lot of classes need to be outside, and so there's just going to be a lot of conflict of space back there. And so, and also things like sports teams and gym classes can't really meet there.
No, I wasn't saying for everybody, certainly, but, you know, for, for some, as another space, not that it's the perfect space or anything like that.
Yes, Susan?
Yeah, no, I just want to echo the fact that this is, this is a very difficult decision. Erin Gallantine, as Superintendent mentioned, who's the head of the Department of Public Works, really did work with the school administration to try to give as much flexibility as possible. It's my understanding that had we asked to completely delay the project, let's say through the end of the school year and start up in July, the number that we were quoted was in the high hundreds of thousands of dollars to postpone the project. So I'll tell you from my personal perspective, if it was just a matter of, well, you know, we were planning it, and, you know, well, guess what? Plans, plans go out the window. So, but this isn't just a matter of having planned it, and it was in the pipeline. This was a question of it being so vastly unaffordable to be able to delay it, given that everything was all geared up with the contractors, and there were penalties for delay and all sorts of things that are not particularly interesting, but, but a lot of work was done to try to figure it out. And so I just, I do want to thank the new Parks and Rec Commissioner, the Parks and Rec Director Alexandra Bakio, who has been here for about five minutes and has already started to, you know, kind of be in the midst of this, pulling back the fence so that at least, I think we've negotiated about 40,000 square feet of space that was supposed to be fenced off, that's now being given to the high school. So anyway, those conversations did happen. I appreciate that it just, I mean, it sucks. There's really no other, other way to say it, but, you know, it'll be great in the future, but for now, it's just, it is one more thing. So it'll be beautiful, and they really, Parks folks have tried to work with us, but, but there wasn't a better answer than, than the one we got, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Merini, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce the new Runkel principal.
I am so pleased and happy to introduce Donna Finnegan as the new permanent principal of the Runkel School. That's great. Donna is, the interview committee interviewed all kinds of candidates, number of candidates, and really were just effusive in their, in their comments about Donna, and felt that, you know, there's been a lot of change, a lot of needs in the school in terms of leadership, and they felt that they really were very pleased that Donna was interested in, in maintaining her position as principal. You know, they, what they said about her is what they really liked about her. Donna, embarrass you a little bit, I'm sorry. But she's honest, she's direct, she's sincere, she's thoughtful, she's caring, she loves her job, and she respects people. Everything that happens is through the lens of respect. She respects children. In fact, they, they were, they were so pleased that every time she has to make a decision, she really washes it through her mind of how is this going to impact the students in this building, and she makes her decisions based on that consistently. That earned her so much credibility. And the fact that, that Donna Finnegan loves Brookline, and she loves being at the Runkel School, and they feel that support, they feel that compassion, they feel that appropriate affection, and they, they want to embrace her as their leader, and they, they just could not say enough about her. So congratulations, Donna. I know that people have high expectations for you, but I'll tell you, you, you will, you will take that school to new heights. So congratulations on taking this job.
Thank you so much. Can I just say a few words? Is that okay? Absolutely. Okay. I just want to thank Jim Merini. I want to thank Joe Russo and the school committee, and the people who volunteered to be on that interview and be a part of the hiring process. It's very time intensive, and I appreciated their thoughtfulness and their support. Jim's right. He said everything I was probably going to say, and I did write a speech, and I'm really not good at using a teleprompter, and that's probably what got me this job, because I speak off the cuff, and sometimes it's funny, and sometimes it doesn't go so well. But I can't tell you how excited I am to stay at Runkel. It means the world to me. I've been at Runkel for 10 years, but I've been in Brookline for 20 years. I started at Baker as a speech and language pathologist, and I've had a lot of different roles, and this role sort of landed in my lap last year very unexpectedly, but I really learned to love it. And I've been so supported by an incredible staff at Runkel. Our teachers are amazing. They've done incredible things during this pandemic and continue to do so. The students have been so resilient, and the parents, my parent community, is so supportive, and I cannot thank them enough either. Our PTO is amazing, and the parents truly have been, that's what keeps me going. I mean, I get supportive emails, the people offer to help, our volunteers come in to do recess and lunch duty. And we can't wait to have kids back next week. We're really excited. It's not fun measuring desks and counting out steps, and, but we're so happy to have the kids back next week, and the middle school students as well. The other thing I just want to say too is the principals in Brookline are amazing, and I could not have done this job this year without that principal group. They've been great mentors, and Jim provided me with Eileen Woods. Dr. Woods is another mentor who's been incredibly helpful to me. I know that it's going to be difficult when we come back. I think we have a big job ahead of us in supporting the mental health needs of our students. I have two boys, a senior last year at Brookline High and a senior this year at Brookline High. So it's been not easy to see two seniors go through a pandemic and see the struggles it brings to every kid. But we're ready to take that on. We're ready to support families, support staff, and to support our students. And I just can't say how excited I am to be here, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you, guys, so much. Donna, thank you so much for taking this on. My goodness. Okay, Andy, jump right in.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Donna, it totally made my day when we heard that your appointment had been confirmed. I recently was part of a listening session with Runkel families and was really struck by the level of trust and confidence that you had built up there in the very short time that you've been the principal. So that you were able to do this during a pandemic is just amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you. And Donna will be here for you, so, you know, we're your friends. So we're here to help you, support you any way we can. We're having a rough day. My advice is just go to that kindergarten class and, you know, have fun in kindergarten. That's what I, that's what I did when I was having a tough day. I go to kindergarten, I go to my Rise classrooms, and then I just sit there, and everything is right in the world. It all makes sense. It all makes sense. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Welcome to stay as long as you want, Donna, but it's work night, and you're welcome to leave as well. So thank you. Okay. Jim, you're up next again. You're going to give us.
A little update on the status of Monday reopening for grades two to five coming back in on Monday. And I actually had the opportunity to speak with every one of the principals, and all schools are ready to go. With great appreciation to the staff, teachers, and, and the support staff that really pitched in to help, I mean, moving rooms, moving furniture, setting things up, resetting protocols, resetting schedules, doing all the heavy lifting that needed to be done as a team. And I, I think it's fair to say that people are tired, that they're going to enjoy a good weekend, I hope. But the schools are ready to a school, and they have, they have really addressed some of the more challenging issues like feeding luncheon on masked time, but every one of them did it. In fact, I asked, what would you like me to say? And one said, just say, we're so happy, we're so thankful to the parents. Parents have been coming in, volunteering, signing up to volunteer. What can we do to help? And had been, you know, in spite of the difficulty, in spite of the pandemic, in spite of the stress and the anxiety, the parents with the principals brought a, a sort of a level of support that was, I think, heartening for the, for the principals and the staff and affirming in terms of the sense of appreciation they felt for the hard work they're doing. So they're, the K8s are up and ready to go, and, and the high school. With Anthony and Hal, they have been working to return students on, on a rolling basis with surveys that, surveys that they have put out, but they have added about 400 students to in-person. And, you know, on Wednesday, yesterday, Anthony sent out a notification so that, to others, to survey families to see whether they want to stay fully remote or come in fully in-person, because they're, they're anticipating to, to end the hybrid option will be ending at the high school. And they'll be moving, you know, to bring kids in. And I think they have, they picked April 8th, that date when hybrid is going to end. And I will say that they are, they are at a place where they're getting many more students than they had anticipated who want to return to school full-time. So they're going, they're going to have to manage that with the reduced distance, and that's a challenge unto itself. But it's, it seems, it seems that there's a momentum growing, and is, you can feel it across the whole district of students returning. We had the open enrollment from RLA, the Remote Learning Academy, to full in-person or go full in-person to opt for the Remote Learning Academy. And the numbers came out, I think I have the numbers right, 117 from the academy to full in-person, and seven from in-person to the Remote Academy. So the principals, of course, were trying to absorb the students who were coming in, and they were successful in doing that. And some of the schools have their grades at capacity now at three-foot distance. So it's like, we're, we're, we're just about there. But the, the shift was clearly in favor of full in-person. So pretty exciting, and pretty much, I think, speaks for the tone and tenor of how people are feeling in terms of trying to move things back as much as possible. So I think that's about all I have to say, Suzanne, in terms of where we are in, in the opening here.
So let's, let's just review quickly, if we could. March 29th, second to fifth graders come back that are coming back in person full-time.
Right.
You said April 8th, the high school?
April 8th, Anthony has put out saying his target date. His target date is April 8th to, to end hybrid. That's, that's his, that's his target date. He's going to be communicating more and more with his parents. He's pretty good about that. And so he'll keep them informed as they go.
And six to eight will be back in what date?
April 12.
April 12. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we had that. Helen, and then Andy?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. I thought I unmuted it. Actually, the question that you had asked about six to eight was my question also, because I got all the other dates, but I didn't get the six to eight. But the other question I had, of the 117 that moved from RLA, were they by chance equally distributed among the schools and among the grades? Or was it? How did that work out?
No, it was not equally distributed. Some schools had five, four, very few. I think the Lincoln had 17, if I'm not mistaken. Donna, you may know better than I know because you had that spreadsheet.
I know Lincoln had, I thought, close to 20 returning, and I had maybe 10.
Yeah.
So, and some had less, and some had.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they were not evenly distributed.
And not even within the 20 at Lincoln were they across eight grades?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Andy?
Yeah, so the, the ending of hybrid at the high school, I mean, by April 8th, does that include ninth grade as well?
I believe it does, but he's having, let me, let me just check that before Anthony gets all over me here. He says, "We made clear that 4/8 is the date by which we are effectively ending hybrids and offering students to attend four days a week in person." He's delaying, the Wednesday half day is going to stay remote for another couple of weeks because they still have some adjustments and some complications to work out. But yeah, April 8th is what he has put out here is when hybrid will be ending.
For, for all, for all the high school grades, including OLS? Okay.
That's what, that's, that's what he has.
All right.
Wait a second now. I mean, he's probably going to tell me, not ninth grade, 10 through 12 was what he's probably going to tell me. I think we should say 10 through 12, Andy.
The email we got from the high school yesterday did not say grades 10 through 12 only.
Okay, so Anthony will be sending more information out. He sent me, he sent me some bullets because he's doing the National Honor Society, or he would be here. And I hate to say it, but National Honor Society is a little bit more important right now. So he has to be with those, those kids who work so hard, and, but he will send more information out. And if he ends early, he may even drop in, he says, but, you know, there are only so many hours in a day, but I'll ask him to clarify, to make certain that it's all grades or it's 10 through 12.
Barbara?
And all of the students get back. What is, how many people are, how many students are left at the Remote Academy for the rest of the year?
Well, I think right now, he says that there are about 30 to 34% that are fully remote. Oh, wait a second, excuse me. Did you say the Remote Learning Academy?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought you meant, I'm still stuck on the high school. So if there are 120 coming in, and so there's probably, would you say, Michelle, around 450 to 500 left?
Probably about 500 left.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm asking because that seems to me a large number if students have a chance, actually, to come back to school. And I did hear something at some point, and I can't remember where, about people wanting the Remote Academy to continue into the future. And I wondered, I wondered whether people were actually considering that as a possibility.
I, I don't know that, I'm, I'm thinking a couple of things, Barbara. One, that the commissioner on his last call, Commissioner Riley, because he's getting that question from across the state, and, and his response at, at least this week was that, "School to school," and that the public schools, people should be in, in school in person. That's, that was his comment this week. However, I don't know in the end what will happen. So I can't say absolutely definitively this is what's going to happen, but I can say that the, the, this, the commissioner at this point is indicating that he's not supporting a remote environment. He's supporting kids going back to school full-time. At this point, that's, that's what he's supporting.
Barbara, you're on mute.
That's an important thing to know because clearly, if everyone is going back to school, we have to be aware of that in terms of hiring and, and so forth. And I think it would be good if we were very, if we, as a group, were clear about the fact that our expectation, if this is true, that our expectation is that all children will be back in school next year.
Isn't that in our budget guidelines too, though?
It is.
Okay.
It is. The budget guidelines were that we would end the Remote Learning Academy, and that we are planning for next year, all-in, all-classes. And that we are planning for next year, all in, all classes. And we're going forward with those plans.
But I think it's important that we are clear that that is what we are doing.
Yep, yep, no, no, I I agree with that. I agree because there are, you know, there have been a few comments made about. The Remote Learning Academy for some of it has worked very, very, very well. But so also. You know, we've seen some of the difficulties with remote learning as well. But that that's part of being a side thing. The reality is that we're planning to go forward with all in full time.
Yeah.
That's our plan.
So Jim, I had a question with the with the with the movement from some students going from RLA to in person. And losing some students at RLA, do we need to? Do you need to reassign staff? Do we have to hire additional staff? Or is that all going to work out in the wash, as they say?
Well, that's a rather insightful question. We actually had a little of a discussion around that in terms of when all of this. Finally settles, because it's going to take a little bit, a couple of weeks for this to all settle with with the moves and, you know, potentially. Late requests and can we meet those requests and all of that. Are the, it goes to Helen's comment in a way. I mean, Helen was asking, do those who are coming into the K eight schools, were they evenly distributed? Well, the converse of that is those who left the RLA, did they leave across the the school? Or is that, you know, targeted in some way or narrow? And it may very well be that we'll have to look at the classes. To see whether consolidation is needed or warranted i- in in terms of. Whether whether we need more help in the K eight or not. So that's not, that has not been determined. We would like to leave it as it is as much as we can. Because it's enough already with the change, and it's enough already with changing teachers and all of that. It the ripple effect on that kind of change can be can really weigh you down. But on the other side, on the other hand, if if. If the numbers get to the to an unsustainable level, then we would have to make some decisions around that. But right now, we're staying pat until we have the real data.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Any other questions, comments? Thoughts about this? Okay, Jim, it's exciting. They'll be coming on Monday. It's exciting. Okay, believe it or not, we are ahead of schedule. So our next, our next piece are are public comments. I don't know if everybody's on board or not. Robin, you can help us. And if they're not here, we'll just go to the next person, and then we'll come back to those who may be coming in a little later. We'll see how this works. So the first person I have is Kyle Tompkins, and after that, Marcy Sax.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Tompkins, and I'm an enrichment and challenge support specialist in resident of Brookline. Many of you may remember ECS as the former gifted and talented program. However, after program review in two thousand fifteen, the newly designed model broader, excuse me. Broadened our reach to work collaboratively with teachers and students alike. Today, I am asking for the district to reconsider the decision to suspend this valuable program. At the March for a School Committee meeting, my colleagues and I listened in disbelief as E S ECS was described as not functioning. Floundering and nonproductive. I would like to take a moment to clarify a few misconceptions. ECS is functioning and is productive. Throughout this year thus far, I alone have taught almost all classes and all students in grades one through five at Ridley. And Driscoll Schools. That's hundreds of students. Here are just two examples of our work. One, when learning about design thinking, students took time to get to know someone important in their lives. Even better by conducting an empathy interview and designed and made homemade gifts for them. And two, students in fifth grade studying energy designed and built windmills using the engineering design process. During reflection, I asked the students what they noticed as they studied their classmates' work. One student wrote, quote, "I noticed all the windmills are different, different materials and different designs. Even though they're all windmills built to do the same thing." She got it. Many different ways to solve a challenge. This along with futuristic design challenges and goal setting, as well as creating STEM learning kits, developing maker spaces. And differentiating curriculum. This comment from a fifth grade student sums up ECS's mission. Quote, "The challenges helped me think about things in a way that I had never thought about before." I respectfully ask the school committee to continue to support ECS and the values that it encompasses. Rigor and challenge for all students, design thinking, project-based learning that stresses real world skills like communication. Collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and building community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kyle. Marcy, you were up, and then Jess Kurda, Kudahia, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and I just want to say hello to Dr. Marini. You can't see my face, but I met you today on the nature walk.
Yes, hello, Marcy. Good to hear you again.
Nice to see you. I'm here to talk about ECS with respect to next year's budget. My name is Marcy Sax. I am a Baker parent of an eighth grader, sixth grader, and fifth grader. I teach enrichment at a STEM creativity private school in Winchester, and I also teach at Creative Arts at Park in the summertime. ECS saved my fifth grade daughter last spring during the pandemic shutdown. And I believe in my soul that it is the spark that ignites all children's excitement to learn. And most importantly, teaching that critical skill of learning how to learn. It was a, it was hard for many kids during the shutdown to stay engaged with the online learning. And there entered Matt Picard, who just created these weekly engaging engineering challenges for kids. Mechanical advantage, biomimicry, making structures in the woods and solving problems. That came from the passions and the individuality of the kids. And it was a community. They would post their work. It really was an exciting, wonderful program that got me so excited that I left my job in children's television. To pursue working in this approach in a private school. ECS I've seen firsthand helps all kids. It helps kids with behavior challenges. It's not, it's strength based. It's it's helping English language learners. I have kids with very little communication skills who are making PC computers. Because ECS is focusing on kids' strengths. It's allowing them to follow their passion. It's allowing the valuable skills of trying. And failing and figuring stuff out. ECS is also working with teachers in the classroom. It's opening them up to real life experiences and coaching them how to do that in the classroom. So that an ELA teacher can, you know, have the kids working with graphic design and making a poster. ECS brings the teachers tapping, I mean, the 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 parents tapping into that resource. Of our background expertise. Matt Picard had me come to Baker School, and I talked to every single seventh grade class about my graphic design background. And it was a fantastic, fantastic program that was just getting off the ground. As we return to in-person school and we're weaning our kids off of their screen addiction. And the multitude of mental health issues that have occurred, this is the exact kind of program we need in Brookline. This is where the spark for learning is hiding inside our children. Or it might have even died in this pandemic, but ECS is social emotional learning and critical thinking and open-ended thinking. And it's going to get kids engaged and excited about learning again because they're following it for themselves. Lastly, in the last day, two parents have come to me. Should I go to private school next year? They have to make a decision in a week. And I, they told me about the schools that they were considering for their children in Cambridge, and they have maker spaces. And the kids are engaged in maker spaces and project-based learning. And I just wanted to say, wow, we have that in Brookline. We have a a space in the library, a maker space and 3D printers and wow, the pro, and they bring. You know, all of us into the school to share our expertise and they're making podcasts. And you know what I said? I said, I'm going to get on a meeting tonight to try to beg this town. To please find a way to preserve this program with all of the money that's about to come in. Please find a way to preserve this program. Please do not cut ECS. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Marcy. Jess, you're up, and then Kayla Nicholson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Thanks. I just want to first say, Claire, it's wonderful to see you and to see that you're participating in these. Hi. I had Claire in fifth grade. So my name is Jesse Curdie. I I work at Driscoll. I've been in the district here for eight years. Mostly as a fifth grade teacher until three years ago when I transitioned to the ed tech specialist position at Driscoll. And I was really crestfallen to learn the district intends to to suspend the ECS program. I've relied on the expertise and the abilities of our ECS specialists every single year I've taught in Brookline. Because they provide a unique and essential function in our district. ECS specialists are the only staff members in our district tasked with both collaborating with staff to create original interdisciplinary and multimodal lessons. And with delivering those lessons to students. Some of the best collaboration I did as a fifth grade teacher was with Kyle Tompkins, our ECS at Driscoll. Kyle immediately grasped my goals and challenges with book groups I wanted to teach. And he was able to pick out literature, identify the big questions and texts and opportunities for critical thinking and deep student discussion in them. Discussion that was differentiated and challenged every student in the class. And then he ran the book groups with me, compared our results each day, graded work, provided feedback to students. And contacted parents when necessary. I quite literally wouldn't have been able to teach those lessons without his collaboration. And since I've moved into the ed tech specialist position, Driscoll continued collaborating with Kyle. As he has envisioned, created, and established staff by him for our maker space. It's a small space right now, nothing like the beautiful space at FRR, which Kyle also runs. But we have a gorgeous and large maker space slated for the new Driscoll. Which will be unstaffed and unusable without an ECS specialist in the building. As I collaborated with him as he's created this maker space, he's integrated unique and creative STEAM lessons with our existing curriculum. It's a godsend for classroom teachers. Hands-on project-based learning is a district goal. We hear about it all the time. We want to be able to deliver it. And it's a goal that's often just out of reach due to the daily demands on classroom teachers. And in that context, ECS specialists are essential to developing and providing the kind of instruction that we all know students deserve. I've heard so many teachers talk about a student in their class who hasn't found their path yet. And who produced exceptional work in the maker space. Brookline Public Schools has not been known for for providing a cookie cutter education to students. But I'm afraid suspending the ECS program makes it harder for us to deliver the instruction that meets every student's needs. Thank you for hearing what I had to say.
Thank you, Jesse. Kayla, you are up, and then Kevin McKenzie.
Hello, hello, hello. Can you hear me?
We can. Kayla, go right ahead.
Thank you. Dear School Committee and Dr. Marini. As of now, literacy coaches in the ECS program are being chosen for elimination as part of a budget cost-saving measure. But I believe that cutting these positions will in fact have a negative impact on student learning. Both literacy coaches and the ECS program provide the academic support needed for struggling learners. The literacy coaches literally coach teachers on how to best make up for learning loss. Taking this position away will take away an important tool from your kids' teachers. Same with ECS. The ECS program supports teachers in providing challenging curriculum to all learners. Keeping the ECS program intact would aid teachers in driving the core epidemic program that's being promised and promoted for next year. Literacy coaches and the ECS program provide vital additional support outside of the general education curriculum. Which I know is of the utmost importance to both administration and families. I fear that families will be very disappointed in the tremendous loss of support for their children if these programs are cut. I strongly urge you to reverse the cuts to both these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Kevin, you are up, and then Debbie Mercer.
Hi, my name is Kevin McKenzie, and I am a paraprofessional at the Lawrence School. Tonight, I urge Dr. Marini and you as members of the school committee to refrain from making any personnel cuts for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year. These cuts are misguided for a myriad of reasons. As parents, families, educators, and other community members scream into the void about learning loss. I find nothing more tone deaf than the elimination of positions and programs that work to close that gap. Our literacy coaches are vital parts of our staff. Their assistance and support to classroom educators is essential to ensure that students grow as readers. As stakeholders express concerns about slow development in literacy. For our district's youngest learners, our literacy coaches will be central to nurturing the growth many wish to see. The mentorship and resources provided by our coaches is not something we can afford to lose. The ECS program has also fostered student learning for many years, with ECS educators reaching hundreds of students. Our ECS educators too have a central role in combating learning loss during the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year. It is time for Dr. Marini to meet with ECF educators and work with them. Many of the stated reasons for the elimination of this program are mind-boggling to me. Central Office has sabotaged this program numerous times, resulting in the inequalities that Dr. Marini has cited previously. This is not the first time I have seen the district conduct itself in such a way. I do not forget when the ELL paraprofessionals were cut at Lawrence. This year, our ELL students face isolation and struggle to progress at the expected pace. It was short-sighted to eliminate these positions. Do not make that same mistake again. And of course, this is without mentioning the human cost of firing staff in the middle of a pandemic. I cannot forget when the school committee decided to pig slip over three hundred Brookline educators last spring. For many of my colleagues whose position you look to cut now, this will be the second pig slip they receive from you in the middle of a pandemic. Given the windfall of federal funding coming to Brookline, the district must act to prevent any and all personnel cuts for the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Debbie, you are up, and then Carolyn Fall.
Good evening, Superintendent Marini and School Committee. My name is Debbie Mercer, enrichment and challenge specialist at Runcle School. I'm speaking on behalf of all K to eight students in Brookline to please pause. And reverse the suspension of ECS. This week, all first graders at Runcle School, the amazing Runcle School with our new principal, Donna Finnegan. Created friendship jars filled with tokens of wonder such as meteor showers. Based on the Caldecott Award Book in the jar. Fourth graders created gizmos and gadgets through the engineering process. Two of whom are researching the patent process to move forward with an invention. Third graders recently created habitats and animals during science unit of study. Now, more than ever, all students need engaging, rigorous learning in their proximal learning zones. Based on the most recent ECS program review. Students need schools as cultures of innovation with the buzz of maker spaces and carts. Students need project-based learning with curriculum connections. Social emotional learning infused with engaging learning with students, the who in the center. With student strengths in the center of student learning. Here are the big questions. What will teaching and learning look like during and after this unprecedented time? How will innovation move forward, not suspended? And lastly, most importantly, how will students experience joy in learning? Please listen to students. Please pause and reverse. the ECS suspension. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Carolyn, you're up and then Paige Scott Reed.
Hi, good evening, thank you. Thank you to all of the speakers who just came before me who are making a very compelling case for the wonderful ECS program. And also, Dr. Merini, I was very happy to see you in person today. I'm very grateful that things are moving back towards kids being back in buildings. Even with the upcoming changes, right now Brookline is not going to hit the required time budget for this school year. And this is a concern on a number of fronts, of course, not just for kids but also for our regulator, DESI and for town meeting members who are going to be asked to vote the school budget in May. And for any stakeholder who cares about our district. One way to get back some of the time lost this year would be to restore the 100 minutes that was cut from students in October. The currently operational contract between the school committee and the teachers' union says, quote, "Students will be dismissed 40 minutes early on one day per week," end quote. In practice, that means kids should be in school until 1:40. In October, an additional 100 minutes was cut, that's more than an hour and a half from that contractual once-weekly early release day. So now kids are finished with school at 12 noon every Wednesday. That is a very short school day, particularly for these children who've missed so much for so long. The 100-minute cut is not contractual from anything that I can see or anything that I've heard anybody say about it. Please do feel free to point out if there is something somewhere that makes this binding. But it appears that the 100-minute cut was a decision made unilaterally and and it appears it would be equally easy to change back. So as of today, we still have kids in school for 100 minutes less than they ought to be every Wednesday. And it happens on 29 Wednesdays this year. It's already happened 18 times, that's 1,800 minutes or 30 hours. Or otherwise put, more than four and a half days of school lost already. And there are still 11 more of these short Wednesdays to come. That's 1,100 more minutes or 18 more hours and that's another nearly three days of learning that could and should be provided to students and isn't being. All told, it amounts to almost a week and a half of school. That's a lot of school, especially this year and in a district that's already short on required learning hours. Right now, every possible learning hour should be maximized for children and then some. I know it's going to take work for the district to figure out how to make up for the lost time. But it seems like a no-brainer to restore the schedule to normal to avoid going further into the red. And it would be delightful for children to have a more normal routine again. And that would mean one day a week of school with a 1:40 release. I hope you'll consider this as things settle in in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Paige, you are up and then Nancy Rowe.
Hi, this is Paige Scott Reed, can you hear me?
Yes, we can Paige, go right ahead.
Hi, yeah. I am thrilled at the progress that Brookline is making towards bringing students back. And I hate to be the person who is still at school committee asking the same questions over and over again, but that's where we find ourselves. The requirements for structured learning time are statutory. They're part of education reform in Massachusetts. And they're critically important, so I thought it was worth taking a minute to talk about where they came from. They came from an effort to equalize the educational opportunities available to students across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Between places where there was real investment in public education and places where there was significantly less investment in public education. Those variations had racial components to them. And they really fell hardest on kids from poor communities. It has been more than a decade since the state required a minimum number of school days in a school year and a minimum number of structured, amount of structured learning time in that year in order to prevent there being those kinds of disparities in access to education in Massachusetts. So in that context, it is incredibly disturbing that Brookline is having to be forced to comply with statute about how much structured learning time students are entitled to. It shouldn't be that way. It also shouldn't be the case that we accept that because a pandemic happened the students who are currently in Brookline's public schools should just accept less education. We have the resources to do better. And so we should be talking about how we spend our budget to ensure that that these kids get the minimum state requirements for structured learning time. Either this year before the school year ends or through some strategy of how we make up that time. There has been talk about, well, maybe we can make up some of the learning loss over the summer. I'm concerned that the summer program is not designed to serve anywhere near the number of kids who are missing structured learning time this year and I ask you to look at the size of the summer program. I'm concerned that the summer program is again limited by this idea of six-foot distancing with which the medical community has told us is not necessary. And I'm concerned that none of the discussion that I've heard, despite all the times that I've asked about structured learning time and making up missing structured learning time has even mentioned any of those words. I have not heard the school committee once say, "We have a deficit, how are we going to make it up?" So I'm asking once again, please start looking at how much structured learning time has been provided to students in Brookline this year and make a commitment to making up the missing time. This is not just some crazy parent looking at obscure regs. This is the core of equity in Massachusetts when it comes to public education. And Massachusetts has been a leader in insisting that public education be available despite whether or not your parents have enough money to send you to private school, despite whether or not you're a racial minority, that public school will be the equalizer. And Brookline has been a leader in that as well. This is not the time for us to turn our backs on that tradition. Please start thinking about how much structured learning time kids have lost this year, given the decisions we've made and how we can make up that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Nancy, you are up and then Heather Pritchard.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead Nancy.
Oh, excellent, thank you. So my name is Nancy Rowe and I'm a parent of two high school students and a fifth grade student at Lincoln. And I I just can't express how much my fifth grader just leaps with joy at the idea that he is going back to school Monday, five days a week. He is so happy and I am so happy for him. And I'm so glad that we have clear plans for returning more and more students to in-person learning. It's so overdue, the children need it so much. But I also want to address the structured learning time. And I also want to bring up some of the points that have just been made by the previous two parents. And that has to do with the amount of time every week that kids are going to lose continuing to keep a 12 o'clock dismissal on Wednesdays. You know, I'm under the understanding that the the contract that was put in place, the 2016 to 2019 that we're still working on now stipulates just one early release, say a week. And again, that is contractually written into that agreement as a 1:40 dismissal time. So letting kids out at noon just increases the amount of learning loss that kids are already experiencing. I was gonna rattle off all of the numbers, but I think that was already, you know, hit home and well done because that is days of learning time lost if we continue to let the noon dismissal time stand. I also want to add that we started our school year an additional week late. That just compounds the learning loss. When we do finally get all of our kids back in school full-time in the fall, I'm hopeful that that 12 o'clock dismissal in the fall will be a thing of the past. We're going to need to do some remediation when kids get back in the fall because the learning loss is real. This right now is an opportunity to stop that accumulation of additional loss. We can give those minutes back to kids in the classroom now and have less work to do in the fall. I just don't think there's a contractual reason that we need to keep that additional 12 o'clock dismissal. We can give that hour and 40 minutes back to our kids now, save them a lot of learning loss later. So thank you so much.
Thank you Nancy. Heather, you are up and then Lindsay is our last speaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can Heather, go right ahead.
My name is Heather Pritchard and I teach sixth and seventh grade social studies at Driscoll. Tonight, I want to urge you to reconsider cutting the enrichment and challenge support program during the upcoming academic year. At Driscoll, our ECS specialist works closely with educators to interject design thinking and project-based learning into the curriculum. Pedagogical approaches such as these support collaboration, creativity and critical thinking. They also offer students opportunities to learn in real-world contexts and inherently include opportunities for student choice. In this sense, the ECS program seeks to engage all students. Last year, Kyle Tompkins and I planned a unit on ancient Japan for my seventh grade students which culminated with a student-planned and student-led public art exhibition titled Seeing Nihon at Town Hall on March 9. Students became artists and graphic designers. They created Japanese calligraphy, ikibana, zen gardens, tea ceremony pottery and shibori. They worked with local professionals such as Shin Abe of Zen Associates who designed the zen garden for the MFA and Joanne Reeves of Brand New who has designed advertisements for companies such as Coach, Crocs, Nautica and Johnston and Murphy. They traveled to the MFA, the ICA and our own local House of Colors to learn about the influence of cultural exchange in Japan's history. This was a massive project. And I could not have offered this experience to the 26 students in my class without the support of Kyle. He helped oversee and support student learning. We ran the seventh grade class concurrently from my classroom and his maker space. We shared the responsibility of reaching out to the local community to find the experts we needed to work with students. Kyle applied for the PTO grant we needed to fund this project. It was truly a collaborative effort. After the students' art exhibition, district-level administrators who had attended the event asked me how we could expand projects like this to more students. It's ironic that approximately one year later, the district is seeking to suspend the program that those administrators admired and that made this project possible. As you look ahead to the upcoming school year, I urge you to reconsider your original assessment of the ECS program. Please dig deeper into the program's benefits and think about how the enriching opportunities we are providing students at Driscoll can be expanded and replicated in all of Brookline schools and for all of Brookline students. Thank you.
Thank you Heather. Lindsay, you are up, you are our last speaker tonight.
Hi, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can Lindsay, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Lindsay and I am a paraprofessional at the high school and I am a single mother of three students in the Florida River School. I just wanted to get on tonight just to express my heartfelt concern with how the school year has been running and how I've just been so so just shocked by a lot of the changes that have been happening throughout the year that not only have, you know, parents like myself have to adjust because, you know, that's what we had to do, but educators having to adjust as well at the last minute. And I understand the taking away of the 12 o'clock Mondays and Fridays that were scheduled, but now we're talking about also taking taking away the 12 o'clock on Wednesdays, which at some point would be disappointing because it that is time where educators need to also be prepared for not only in-person students but remote students as well because there are, there still will be remote students. So to just take away everything and just throw out all these different schedules that are happening throughout the year, it's just so difficult for educators sometimes to adjust. And sometimes I feel and I can't, I'm not ever coming from a biased point because I'm coming from a parent and educator and just a human being with just common sense that I feel that things are being pushed so hard because yes, as parents, we want our kids to get that education, we want them to be in school. My sixth grader can advocate for herself and says, yes, I need to be in the building because working at home is difficult because you're comfortable, you're in your home space, so it does get comfortable. It does get hard to focus on what you need to focus and her being in school has helped. However, as a parent, we do know that we're the ones that have to stand up and do what we have to do for our kids, no matter what. This has not been easy for anybody. This year has not been easy for not one person, no matter what the decision has had to be made. But common sense would just say, if this was last year, March, everything would be shut down, no matter what, because with just one case we would have shut down everything. But to just think a whole year later that things may are, have not changed that we're rushing these kids back into school, yes. We as parents, like I'm going to say again, we make things happen. But it hurts when I, when I drop off my child at school and all I see is parents standing at the top of the street drinking coffee. Is that why we want our kids back into school, just so that we can have a social moment? Because we could do that regardless, we make a way, we make a way for things to happen. But to feel like we're forcing these kids to be back in school or forcing educators to come up with quick, quick thinking is difficult and it's wrong and it's tough. Because as human beings, yeah, we can multitask and we can do 1,001 things if need be. But sometimes having that break and having that moment to be able to say, you know what? It's time to to relax, let me get this day off my shoulders. It's been tough for everyone, it's been tough for students, it's been tough for educators, it's been tough for parents. But you know what, as parents, we have to learn how to to cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure that our kids are safe as possible. And I understand that no matter what, no matter what a decision is, nobody's going to be happy. No matter what, because that's just the way America is. No matter what decision is made, no one will be happy. But I just pray and hope that things are done in a way that is safe, not only for kids but for educators who are with these students a good amount of time of the day. From, from the time that 7:30 hits to the time 3:30, 4 o'clock hits, these kids are with us. And we want to make sure that they get what they need and we get what we need at every expense necessary. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Lindsay. That concludes public comment. We are going to move on to report on the update on time and learning. However, I believe Susan has some information about BHS that might be helpful to us. Is that true or is that a surprise?
Yeah. No, I'm happy to, we're back from Merini, Ken.
Yeah, no, I believe Susan, you have, you received a letter from the high school. And what I have wasn't clear whether it was 9 through 12 or 10 through 12. And did the letter you received clarify that?
Yes, so the high school parents received a letter yesterday which explained that there was a require, it's actually a very, it's great news. It is about all four grades returning. It, it is about all four grades returning. There are a couple of caveats in there about, you know, no less than three feet at OLS. Almost all of the classrooms will be there given the size. There might be more flexibility at 115 Greeno Street. Wednesdays will continue to be remote in April and there'll be more information about that coming and there are just other, some other changes to the schedule. So, just to underscore our previous, our previous public comment or there are changes. And every, every parent was asked to fill in a survey. So, everyone gets a lot of emails, but please do fill in that survey because it will help the high school plan, but I just wanted to clarify that. Mariah may have mentioned something earlier to that same effect, but that's, that's where it is and it's exciting news. So, thank you to everyone who's making that happen.
All right.
Helen, I think Helen has a question or comment.
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt you, Dr. Marie. Were you gonna?
I'm just thanking Susan, that's all.
You know, I'd like to request if you could ask the high school, when they send out letters like that to all parents, it would be great if the school committee got it too because some of us don't have children at the high school and it's important information for us to know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right now, I'll send it to you all right now.
I already forwarded it a couple of minutes ago, so it is in people's inboxes.
Thank you Mariah, thank you Susan. You're taking good care of us, we appreciate it. Michelle, are you ready with maybe Dr. Marini or just?
Well, let me tee it up if I may.
Sure.
But because Michelle has been working with the state on the time on learning, structured learning time. And as we heard this evening, there have been a number of members of the community who've been concerned about that and they've been in communication with the state. Michelle has followed up. She's been working with representatives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and she, she has been working with all of the schools as well. So, she's, part of her presentation here tonight is really to give the whole community an update on what's happening with structured learning time, K-8, 9/12, and with the state's communication with the district as well. So, Michelle, can you take us through that?
Absolutely. Let's see, I'm gonna share my screen. And let's see. Okay. So, I wanted to tonight take some time to, to follow up on the report that was filed in February and to just follow up with what has counted, what's included in, in structured learning time and to clarify the understanding for the regulations and remind people that as the state moves out of a hybrid learning, that, out of the hybrid learning, that that hybrid remote instruction will no longer count towards instructional learning time. So, for example, as of April 5th, K through 5, we'll all need to be in-person learning. So, the structured learning time will all be set right at the school level. It will not include multiple venues for instruction. So, we're gonna just take a quick look at those overview of regulations. We're gonna look at the K to 8 data, which I'm also gonna send to the school committee, but it's also public on the DESI website. And then as, as Jim talked about, just give some next steps on the information that we've received from the state. So, just to clarify, we know that there are concerns from families about the structured learning time and so I wanted to make sure that we understood what they mean by structured learning time because it's a tech, very technical thing. So, the structured learning time in general is what is the time in bold here, where students are engaged in regular and scheduled instruction and learning activities. Could be assessments within the curriculum and any study of the core subjects or other subjects. What I also want to remind people is that there are two pieces to it. So, there's also this set number of hours that we have to make for the year and that has been adjusted this year. I know there was a comment from one of the speakers tonight about us starting with 10 less days. That 10 less days was set by the state and so every school district in the state was shortened to 170 days this year and that is statewide. So, the structured learning time expectations have also been adjusted based on those 10 days. So, I want to make sure that it's understood what counts as structured learning time and what does not count so that as we work with principals, you know what it is that we are counting as the instructional learning time and what is being left out of that data. So, live in-person instruction, the live streaming instruction currently counts. So, when classes are, are live streaming, that does count as structured learning time. Again, apro, after April 5th for K through 5, that would still count because, that will no longer count unless a student is completely in remote learning environment. Small group instruction. So, when a teacher provides some instruction and then works with a small group, the work that students are doing independently that may not be part of that group does count as structured learning time. What does not count is our recess, social check-ins, non-instructional game time, unstructured study time, and optional programming. So, if students are in part of clubs, in clubs that take place during the day, those are not counted as structured learning time. The other thing is to keep in mind is that the reported data that we're about to look at was for our hybrid model. As we go back to school next week, grade 2 through 5, they're gonna return to a traditional school schedule. Many of the 6 through 8 classes will also reflect the traditional schedule next week as it was easier for principals to make the entire shift all at once so that when those students return on the 12th of April, then they're continuing with the schedule that they've been working with. So, these pieces of data are again from our hybrid. The state asked us to report on the 10 days of the first week of February, the first 10 days of February that we were in school. So, this data reflects the, that timing and our goal was to get to 25 hours a week of, of every, 25 hours a week of live instruction with our students in grades 1, 4, and 7. So, you can see here that we have met that and we've met it in grade 4 as well and in grade 7 and then the high school data. And the high school was required to get to 27 and a half hours. What I do want to point out are a few things. Again, this is where you can find it on the state dashboard. The state has a dashboard for time on learning. It is actually noted on the data and accountability page. What we want to note is this, and I think this is, this is where a lot of the questions come. The high school in the fall, when we first submitted our first report, was not certified. Their data did not certify because we weren't quite on track to meet the time on learning. We worked with the high school and the state to make adjustments to schedules. Again, there will be another new set of schedules in April and then I have the note there to see the communications that keep coming from the high school because as they add students, they're also adjusting the, the schedule to provide more learning time. We have, we're, worked directly with the state on that certification, on the fat, lack of certification from the first set of data. Because we have made these changes and adjustments, the state has been very clear with us that right now, we do not need to make up learning time at the high school. However, as Dr. Marini pointed out, we do have several complaints into the state that have been filed that we are responding to. If there are findings from the state based on the material that we are sending to them and providing, that is when we will receive word on if we need to address any additional hours for the high school. So, that is where we currently are with our learning. I think there's just one other thing to point out about state regulations is that schools are allowed to provide professional learning time and to have what they consider a partial day. We just have to meet a certain number of hours to make the partial day to have it count as a full day of instruction. So, I'm gonna close this, stop sharing and just see what kinds of questions or comments people have.
Questions, comments, concerns? Jim?
I have a question for clarification, Michelle. On structured learning time, how does that relate to the Remote Learning Academy or high school students who are fully remote?
So, fully remote instruction is, is allowed and our, our remote learning academy, academy is required to have full instruction every day and so their data certified immediately because they have more than the required hours at the remote level. And as the state has stated that parents have the option to have a fully remote instruction going forward for the rest of the year, they will continue with that schedule.
Is, Michelle, is that true also for the high school?
Correct and it is correct. When the high school, so as the, you said, the high school is, is releasing their hybrid mid-April or beginning of April and so the high school will be well above, well ahead of most other districts because they will not need to go to a full-time, they, they, because hybrid is still allowed in the state until the state sets a date when you either have to be remote or full-time.
So, I, so let's just go through that again, I'm sorry. So, the date for the high school hasn't been set yet. So, you're saying that between now and that date, we have extra hours?
We'll have extra face-to-face hours. Well, it, it's still the structured learning time.
Okay.
It, it's still the same set of hours, but it's, we're gonna have face-to-face hours instead of having asynchronous hours that count towards instructional time. So, do you want clarity on that?
Sure, if you have something more to say about that, yeah.
No, it's just that right now, part of our learning time that counts at the high school is asynchronous time and by bringing the students back in and taking away the hybrid, we're adding more face-to-face time with students.
You don't get extra credit for face-to-face though. I mean, it's not like it's weighted and it's like a 1.2, it's still, okay. Mariah?
Thanks. So, I just want, I want to make sure I'm understanding sort of the big picture. So, K-8, the numbers worked in the fall, continued to work. Good, good in terms of the, that mandate. Nine through 12, the numbers were not compliant, the schedule is continually evolving and is it accurate to say by the end of the year, or at some point, we will either be, like, we will know if we have any hours to still make up and there will be a, a plan proposed to make up those hours? Is that accurate?
Correct. And, and that, the only time that that would happen is if there are findings from the response that we provide to the state on the current filings.
Right, so the state would determine if we fell short and then what, to what level and then we would have to address that. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, Dimitri?
Michelle, thank you for the information. Does time, if, if students were to go through summer programming, would that count toward the structured time?
No, because the summer programming is actually in the school year of '22. So, the school year ends at the end of this year and that's why, and that's why I understand that people are asking about the regulations because the regulations do state that if we were found to be short, we would have to make that up before the end of this school year.
Any other comments or questions?
The only, the only comment I would make Suzanne is just to be, to reinforce, the high school has in fact changed its schedule to add more time for learning. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, currently, we would be meeting the time?
The state, yep.
Okay. So, and we will get an update from the state in April? Oh, that's, and we have to give them an update and then they?
They have not, they, there will be another set of data collection. They have not announced the date of it yet.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, Helen?
Yeah, I'm just curious what the high school did to get more time. I mean, have, are they offering less study halls or what is it?
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we also, if Anthony gets here or if he doesn't, that we also get time from him. The one thing that they did do was added scheduled asynchronous time. So, students are receiving more asynchronous instruction, which could include like video and stuff from a teacher in the hours that they're not in school. And so, that includes scheduled time on Wednesdays and additional scheduled times on Mondays and Fridays because of the Z block. And I would, and beyond that, I would put it to Anthony and Hal.
Yeah.
Mariah?
Sorry, just one other question that just came from your answer to Dimitri. So, if we can't make it up next year and we have to make it up this year, what does that, like spill that out for me?
So, that's gonna require some support from the state to identify how we would do that.
Do you have any foreshadowing of that you can provide or no?
I, I don't. I, and I spoke with them again today.
Okay.
Dimitri?
But I suspect, Michelle, that that may mean that we have to extend the school year. It may be June and we find ourselves that we have to add on more days in order to make up time. That could be a possibility.
That could be a possibility. Mm-hmm. Again, I think this is sort of uncharted territory this year, so we're getting more information as it comes out.
Okay, thank you so much, Michelle. I'm not seeing any other hands, so I think we'll move on. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to an update on the '22 budget.
Okay, and as part of that budget piece Suzanne, if we can stay with Michelle, then segue over to Casey. Michelle is, this is not about structured learning time anymore now. This is really about summer programming, the kind of thinking that's been going on in the district in terms of planning, because you need to get going on the planning, the kind of planning and thinking that's going into summer program for students, particularly, I would say, in the context of the pandemic as, as well as what would traditionally happen. So, if you can let us know the kind of thinking that the team is doing for the summer.
So, this is, this is more fun to talk about than structured learning time. I will definitely say that. So, this summer, and I think there were some questions about this as well in the comments tonight, this summer, we are running the, the regularly scheduled program that we do to give students who need more support that opportunity. And so, that includes Project Discovery, which is the reading program in the elementary. It includes the Star Academy, which really works with our English language learners and many of our Metco students and it includes summer, additional summer school at the high school. And those programs are going to run as scheduled. If you want to hear the presentation on those, the recording of this, this curriculum subcommittee from not this week, but last week will support, support all the information and details about those programs. However, we've been thinking a lot about students who have not been in some, some of our students have not been in a school building in over a year and we want to get some opportunities for students to do some enrichment over the summer and to engage in a little bit more school-like experiences and also to have some continuity from this school year into next. And so, we've been really exploring what could that look like and how could we have sort of, as Mariah says, a universal program out for all students who, to have an opportunity to participate in. And so, working with Mindy Paolo, because she runs the Star Academy and Keith, they both run the Star Academy and hearing about how they put that together and the information there and then thinking about how, what we could do for all students at the K to 8 level. And so, I'm gonna share my screen again and kind of give you some information about what we've been thinking about and let people know that we are going to be surveying families next week in order to look at if, what, what can go forward and how many students are interested in participating. So, what I'm gonna share with you is this document for a summer enrichment program and really thinking about a project-based approach for, for this program. So, we're looking at engaging students for four weeks, a four-week program that would run in July. However, we're gonna do it in two-week cycles. So, if students wanted to participate in two weeks or four weeks, they would have that opportunity and we're looking at an interdisciplinary project. So, that would include opportunities for students to engage in problem-solving, reading, writing, math, music, movement, wellness. We want to put it sort of all together to be more of an engaging opportunity rather than a, as we just talked about, a structured learning time where you'd have a math class, an ELA class, a social studies class. We also wanted to have students have projects that are meaningful to them. So, like one of the examples here was to think about how to colonize on a planet or how to recommend improvements to a local how to colonize on a planet or how to recommend improvements to a local park. I know that when we heard Claire's report tonight and she was talking about the field, I was thinking about all the things students could do to be proactive, to be activists around the information around the field. So students who, we're gonna, and I'll show you a little bit how this is gonna work. We're talking about these projects to take place in grade-level bands. So students entering first and second grade will, will have a set of projects. Student entering three through five would have a set of projects and students entering six through eight would have a project. And totally over the four weeks, you would have the opportunity to do two projects. In addition to the projects, students would participate every day in community buildings. So we would build in the SEL piece at every day very intentionally. And so I wanted to just sort of give you a rough idea cost-wise. So if we were to do 1,440 students, and that would be 25% of our rising first through eighth graders, that would cost us about $260,000 right now. And that would include the instruction, it would include the supports we have put in, parent support, EL support, special educator support, counselor support for students and and including classroom teachers and any specialists that would need to be part of this program. And so we just looked at, and you know, I know we have heard about the design project. It is, it is a process that we use in a lot of our design for instruction, but this would really give the students the opportunity to dig into some project-based learning. The program would run for three hours every morning. And then, and then students would be free the rest of the day. One of the things that we are in the midst of is connecting with other partner organizations like the RAC Center to see for about opportunities for students so that there could be continuation of a day should they need it. And so right now, we are looking at this, we've been exploring what this could look like, but we will, in order to really gauge the, how many students would be interested in, in attending, we will be surveying families next week. So I'm gonna stop sharing again and sort of leave open for questions.
Jennifer, and then Helen.
Technically, I have a comment, not a question, I think, but we have had some really in-depth conversations about this at the curriculum subcommittee. So I really do encourage people to go back and, and take a look at that for a lot of detail because we've spent some time and we'll be doing a follow-up meeting in April as well. And one of the things that we talked about was this interest in interdisciplinary project-based learning and making sure that we're providing opportunities this summer. So I'm excited to hear about the potential of this project because this is something new. And so I, I really, I'm glad that we're gonna be surveying families next week. So I'm glad to hear that that's up and coming because that was something we had talked about as well. And I also really like the idea of connecting with community connections to get a full-day option for families as well. And, and I like the idea of being able to participate in a two-week band because some families may be available for some sections of the summer and not for others. So I think that will be very helpful to community members and families. And so I, I look forward to hearing more details about what the results of the survey are, perhaps at that April curriculum committee meeting, subcommittee meeting, so that we can talk about the number of students we're able to serve and whether or not the interest is more or less than this sort of 1,440 number that's, that's being talked about now.
And the 1,440 number really was to just get a gauge on cost because it's, it's, that would be the first, that would be 25% of the students. But again, like we said, we're gonna offer it. We would offer it to anybody who was interested.
So the benchmark for participation is interest-based? Okay. And then can you tell me the number again, the, the budget for the 1,440? I was taking notes as fast as I could, but I.
Yeah. So the budget for 1,440 students would be about $260,000.
And is there a budget source for this? And where would, do we, do we know where that would come from?
I'm gonna leave that to the budget conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Helen, did you, where am I coming?
Yes, I did. Yes, thank you. You listened and you really have given us exactly what we asked for. This is perfect, you know, for those kids who want some fun things to do in the summer that have an educational piece. And for those kids who have not been in school for over a year. I would hope we try to target those students, you know, in a way that, that really helps them in a very structured, low anxiety-producing type of situation to come back to school. So I'm thrilled. Thank you, Michelle. And everybody else who's been involved with it.
There was a group.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna quickly clarify, there would be no cost for families for the.
Correct, thank you. I did not say that. Yes, there would be no cost to families. We are looking to offer, offer this for free and include transportation for students from Boston who would need that.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Susan and then Jennifer. Susan?
Yeah. So first of all, Michelle, thank you. I just, I won't repeat everything Helen said, but this has been really an important, project-based learning has been such an important thrust of how we've tried to think in an interdisciplinary way for so many years. And so just, this, this really does feel like a much more engaging approach than many others that, that could have been considered. I just want to note, this is just more of a comment as we move into the budget discussion. You know, I'm sort of putting this conversation into conversation with a lot of the budget conversation around the ECS program and how the ECS program has been reconfigured over the years. And the results of that sort of program review a number of years back. So I just think we have to put those in, it, it's tempting to kind of think about them as two separate ideas because one is summer and one is year-round. At the same time, I think just in terms of pedagogical philosophy, this really is, I think, a direction that I'm very interested in going in, other, others, I believe as well. And so if that's right, then just thinking about them holistically so that we have sort of a consistent strategic approach, I think is probably worth spending a little time on. So we can save it for the budget discussion. I just wanted to connect those two dots.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just had a quick follow-up again, just because we're not sharing the screen. What are the grade bands again that?
Oh, yeah, and I'll.
Talk about middle school and the three to five grades and.
Yes. So entering first and second, so the students rising out of kindergarten and out of first grade, entering three through five, so the students writing, rising out of second, out of third and out of fourth, and then entering six through eight. And one of the things that, that we did receive a question on as we were talking about this earlier today was about high school, and we think there's a lot of opportunities already at the high school for the rising eighth graders to participate in. So we did cap it at students entering eighth grade.
Rising ninth graders.
I mean, rising ninth graders, sorry, rising entering, yes.
Okay. Casey, are you gonna piggyback on this?
I can, yes. I'm gonna share my screen, but before I do, just want to let the committee know that I'm presenting tonight, yes, on part of it is summer, but also wanted to give folks an update on where we are with compensatory services, given that we had so many different types of interruptions to student special education services from last March until now. Go ahead and share my screen. All right. Can someone give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen? Thank you, Susan. So just a quick, some quick background here. Last March, Governor Baker suspended all schools for the remainder of the school year. And not long after that, the Federal Department of Education clarified that schools and districts were still required to provide, in special education, Lingle, we call FAP, which stands for Free Appropriate Public Education to students with disabilities during the time that in-school, during the time that there was remote learning, that we still had to provide services basically, and that the acknowledgement that services would look different while schools were closed. And despite the efforts, our best efforts by our teams to create and implement remote learning plans for students with disabilities, some students were not able to access special education and related services that were necessary to make effective progress on their IEP goals. There were, and unfortunately continue to be, a number of difficulties in providing these services consistently. Some examples include staffing, just ability, availability of staff to provide services on IEPs. The remote setting certainly has made it difficult for students to access services, as I'm sure folks have heard all along. And where there was a delay or a disruption in providing services due to the pandemic and the closure of schools. Again, the U.S. Department of Ed stated that IEP teams have to determine whether and to what extent compensatory services may be needed. Just a quick definition because it's not, this is new to us, obviously. In the state of Massachusetts, COVID-19 compensatory services are described as services that a student's IEP team, which always includes the parent or guardian, determines are needed to remedy a student's skill or knowledge loss or lack of effective progress that resulted from delayed, interrupted, suspended or inaccessible IEP services, again, because of the suspension of in-person education related to the pandemic. I want to just make a quick clarification point here as the district enters into this next phase of teaching and learning, which really is the, the recovery stage, the enrichment stage that Michelle spoke to when presenting the summer program. So many students may need some type of recovery support to address their educational and social emotional needs, to reorient them to back to learning in the next school year. While there's no state or federal law that defines the term recovery support, districts are planning for, much like ours, what recovery support should look like. I just want to make folks make it clear that whatever we plan through general education is open to and includes students with disabilities. So going back to COVID compensatory services, which again are just for students with disabilities, DESI, this is the State Department of Ed now, has asked districts, they asked us in the fall to prioritize certain groups, much like we did with our first to return cohort. This slide lists out the priority groups that DESI asked us to follow, which we did. And that determinations for who qualifies for compensatory services, at the very least, a first group of students had to be identified by December 15th of 2020, which would give us the remainder of the school year to provide these compensatory services. So here are some examples of the types of services that we've been and will continue to provide. And again, it's not an exhaustive list. I think most folks know that a majority of the IEPs that we have in the district have multiple goals in them. IEPs are a roadmap for how a student will make progress in their learning and their, their IEP goals are the markers. We've relied heavily on the staff and families to help measure where students are with respect to each of their IEP goals to determine in what areas they will need compensatory services. A student with multiple goals on her IEP may be making progress in some areas and then not. And for those areas where they're not making progress, the remedy would be a compensatory service. And so where are we now? We have identified about 150 students from BEEP to our students in our transitions program, which is our program for students age 18 to 22, who would need compensatory services. These services are underway. We have, we applied for and received two grants from DESI to provide services during the weekends and school vacations. We also have funding that we had set aside from the ESSER grant. And while we anticipate that most, if not all, services will be provided by the end of the school year, we are preparing to continue to provide some compensatory services after the school year. It's not easy to find staff who aren't too tired to want to work more after a long week. But that goes for students too. Scheduling, we have found, has been difficult for some families because, and I don't blame them. It's hard to, to put your kid in some more services after, again, going through a full week of school. I listed here in the sub-bullet here is, we have had some trouble filling speech compensatory services at the high school. So we are preparing to provide that over the summer if we can't fulfill all of those services before the end of the school year. And then any students from BEEP to eighth grade who we can't schedule before the end of June, or we don't have providers to provide all of those services before the end of the school year. Here's a visual representation of what we're planning for the summer. And again, while the goal is to provide all of the compensatory services before the end of the school year, we do need to plan for the possibility that some students just won't finish or we won't finish providing those services before the end of the school year. We are hoping we will have steady staffing until June. But again, I think if anything has taught us, if we've learned anything the past year, it's to, and I know everyone's sick of this term, is to pivot easily and have that ability to do so. But if you look here, these are updated numbers. Again, this is as of this week. We are predicting between 10 and 15 students across the board in our district who may need, who don't finish their compensatory services before the last day of school. We do continue, we are planning to run the extended school year program, much like we have in previous years. There are about 300 students who participate every year. Again, not all students with IEPs have extended school year on their IEPs. These are students who have shown a history of significant regression when they are not in school. And then when they come back, they've shown limited recruitment capability. We do have some students who have extended school year on their IEPs for whom we do owe compensatory services. That overlap is about 10 to 15 students. Again, our goal is to provide these services before the end of the school year, but we are planning to provide those services after the end of the school year if need be. In terms of the costs, you know, it's really hard to pinpoint what it will cost us beyond the school year for compensatory services. Again, if you go back, if you think back to that slide that I had listing the different types of compensatory services offered, it really depends on the frequency that we're offering, the types of services, and staffing. In terms of extended school year, every year we use the IDEA grant to cover it. It's ranged between $450,000 to $500,000 and we, you know, we plan for that way ahead of time in terms of being prepared to, to, to cover that cost. The update I have on compensatory services and summer options that are coming out of the Office of Student Support. I'm happy to take any questions that folks may have.
Questions, comments, thoughts? Casey, I had, I had one. I can now get to you, Mariah. If, if a guardian or parent, family member is concerned or wondering if their child has received all their services, I believe they go to the IEP team. Is that what I saw on one of the slides?
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. That's a great question. So for, if your child, you should have heard by now from your ETF whether or not your student qualifies for compensatory services. If you are unclear as to whether or not your students should be getting compensatory services, contact your ETF or your special education director.
Thank you. Mariah, did you have a comment or question?
I was just wondering, so you talked about extended school year. Is there any component to the program that Michelle talked about that addresses special education participation? I might have missed that.
Yeah, no, Michelle mentioned it, but I'm happy to talk a bit more about that. Michelle and I have been talking all week about the summer enrichment. Michelle and I have been talking all week about the summer enrichment program, and it is open to all students, English language learners, students with disabilities, students with IEPs and 504 plans. And we're, we are, in order to help students access general education curriculum, we will be prepared with, provided that we can, we can pay for this program. We'd like to be prepared with the appropriate support staff. So that would include English language teachers, special education staffs, including teachers and paras, and any other support staff necessary, such as school counselors to help kids access this enrichment program. I think that it would be a fantastic boost, in particular for our students with disabilities, to participate in this program. Just the inclusion opportunities alone would be fabulous.
And the dollar amount that Michelle mentioned then is all inclusive of the entire staffing that would be needed for that?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I see that Anthony is here, but I'm going to ask you to wait just a few more minutes, Anthony. We did have some questions, so just catch your breath for a minute. And Mariah, did you want to then move into the budget?
I think it's Jim and Mary Ellen.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, Mary Ellen. What we're going to do this evening is give you a status report on where we are on the budget. And we'll, we'll go through the numbers where we are at this point and describe the process, a little bit of where we are and you know, and really address a question of why, why is it taking us so long to actually develop our budget? So we really want to address that. Mary Ellen, if you can share the screen, then we can, we can go through this. Okay, thank you. Can we go to the next slide? This is, again, the slide about reminding us, we're really here because we want to focus on what we think is best for students. And so every time we get a chance, we, we put this up to remind us, remind us, remind us, because you can get into the numbers and lose your purpose. So we want to make sure we're staying with this. Okay, Mary Ellen? So it seems like, why is the budget taking so long for us to finalize? You've heard this evening, and you've been hearing for quite some time, the, the impact of the pandemic. Well, there's been a huge shift in personnel, as I know you have an appreciation for. The Remote Learning Academy really was a ninth school, had 700, roughly 700, more or less, students that were enrolled in the Remote Learning Academy, essentially over a weekend to pull all of that together, which meant the reassigning of staff, collapsing of sections, and hiring a large number of staff, teachers, and paras, one-year positions to get the school up and running. And of course, with the help of Meg and her team, that was successful. However, decommissioning the school is also very complicated because we are now reassigning teachers to positions they were in prior to the Remote Learning Academy, determining which teachers are not going to be continuing in Brookline, and, and doing that in a way that is not only respectful, but is accurate, so that we are able to rebuild the K8 schools with the Remote Learning Academy staff and doing those personnel changes and assigning them to the appropriate place without being redundant and all without leaving things out is a a detailed challenge that we have been working through very deliberately. We do not want to make mistakes with personnel, and we do not want to do that in a way that then we don't fund the budget appropriately. So we are taking our time with that. Compounding that is the reduction of the enrollment, the decrease in enrollment from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. And we need to make the appropriate changes that address the decrease in enrollment while we are reassigning teachers from the Remote Learning Academy. And as we do that, we're looking at the equity of programs across all buildings. So that while enrollments vary from building to building in terms of the decrease, some, in fact, in some classes, they may be going up. And as we, as we're balancing off and looking at the enrollment and the staffing, we're also looking at programs so that we can pro, some, some staffing is done on a ratio basis. And we want to make certain that we are assigning teachers who may be in different buildings and being able to do that in a way that provides all buildings with equitable support. Again, it's a, it's, it's a massive task to do that, but we're working through that quite deliberately and with making great, great progress. The other thing we're looking at is sort of having documentation on budget requests, not the challenge of budget requests, but to look at what the request is in the, in, in and the context of, again, declining enrollment, distribution of resources, looking at equipment needs and documenting where the, where those needs are so that we can meet those needs and not just either not really meet the need or overspend on that. So that's taking some time because we need to be able to say, this is why we need those funds. This is where those funds are going to go. This is what it's going to support. And this is what, how students are going to benefit from the expenditure of those funds. We're drilling down into that area and working with program directors quite deliberately around this. And I think that that actually is, is refreshing for the program people as well as they make their requests. But our goals as we do all of this is first to adhere to the school committee budget guidelines. We want to adhere to those guidelines. School committee discussed those earlier in the process and committed to those. And we are committed to being guided by those. And we've heard this tonight a couple of times, but we really want to work to minimize reduction in force. That's a high priority for us this year for a lot of reasons. And so one of the ways that we want to minimize that is to do a very good job on the first bullet in terms of the personnel and making certain the personnel is being assigned correctly. And we want to optimize, this is a very important thing. You're going to hear about additional revenues that may be available with the rescue funds and the ESSER 2, ESSER 3. And those funds are multi-year funds coming to the district. It is very, very important that we optimize and extend use of one-time revenues, that we not just use them all this year because they are designed to be multi-year. And to avoid creating a cliff, a budget cliff, because they're one-time revenues, we need to be deliberate and planned as we expend these funds and stretch them over as much time as we can, which will allow the town over that amount of time to recover its own financial footing, given the reductions and the impact of the pandemic. So that's what's driving us and that's what's taking us a significant amount of time. And that's why it's taking us a long time to finalize the budget. We want it to be very accurate, when, not very accurate, accurate when we, when we do finalize. Okay, Mary Ellen? Oh, I'm going to ask Mary Ellen, let me see what's coming up. Going to ask Mary Ellen to go through the numbers so that you can understand how we went from our, and from, from the town's allocation, town school partnership allocation, to the school committee's vote and, and the additional funds that are coming in that we recognize now and where that leaves us as we have these numbers. So you can see what the gap is at this point and how we arrived at that gap. So Mary Ellen, do you want to take us through this?
Sure. You have a, just orient you to this page. We have a column that's gold colored, and that's where we are this evening and where our numbers all tie out to. But from our last meeting and the last school committee vote, we had, we were working with a projected request, full request of $130,280,000. The town's portion of that was, the request from the school committee was going to be $125,825,000. However, in, on March 25th, that number from the town school partnership has actually only moved up 152,000 to, from 120,045,000 to 120,197,000. We, the ESSER 2 funds, we, which are, are funds through September 23, we had proposed to be using all of those. I will inform you, we've taken a portion of that off to order spring tents. Spring, the spring tents this year, for this year, because we have no other funding sources available to us, given our operating budget deficit. But the other new news that happened in the last week are, is the American Rescue Plan that was authorized by Congress. And out of that, there's the ESSER 3 coming, and 3.6 million is being applied at this point to the overall budget. That again is also funds that are through September of '23. And I'll explain what those funds can be used for in the next slide. And then the American Rescue Plan, which is the town's allocation. And I'll explain, that's TBD and will be TBD, I believe, for the very near future until there's more meetings with the town on the review of that. Circuit breakers stayed the same, and our town materials fee, that's our tuition to our employees, has stayed the same. So our revenue gap went from roughly over 5.7 million to 2.4 million. So as we refine our budget and as we review what the town is willing and able to do under the American Rescue Plan resources, that is a potential, that potentially will, that revenue gap will close. The ESSER 3 funds, there are restrictions to these funds. At least 20% of the funds need to be used for learning recovery. They use the term learning loss. And also, any remaining funds can be used under current law. So applying it to our, our budget is perfectly fine. However, again, this is a one-year, if we use it all in one year, it's one-year funding. Those funds will need to be replaced in future years if any of the staff is permanent or considered permanent. But 20% of 3.6 million is well over $700,000,000. And we will need to specifically identify existing either additional summer services that we've talked about, or we will need to be identifying some additional staff or staffing related to that and specifically charge that to that grant. The American Rescue Plan, those funds are available through December 31st, 2024. So certainly across the next two and a half fiscal years. The only eligible clause in this for school departments is item number three, where a cut would be due to lost, or loss revenue. And that's where we have, the school department has some argument to be made that we have a loss in our revenue from, from the town and can have that replaced or would have that, be able to have that replaced. In terms of the, so that's our revenue. In terms of the budget, we've had, we've had a couple of adjustments since our last presentation. We are, you know, as Jim talked about, we're trying to really pinpoint finalize staffing and making sure that we are meticulous around positions and funding of positions. And we've been working diligently on that with principals and coordinators and senior staff. And so we're still finalizing that. But there was a change from February 11th, about 836,000 increase. And then we also had made a recommendation to decrease the salaries for the building division. Those are the HVAC staff and some of the other staff he, Charlie Simmons, had requested. And I want to pause here. The, specifically around the public building division and our allocation is that the public building division receives a sort of contractual increases of 2.5% or the contractual increases with regards to staff as part of the, as part of their budget development of town school partnership. But with regards to any expansion or special projects that the school department wants as part of the school department budget or school, school department portion of his budget, the school committee needs to take those funds from the town school partnership allocation. There's not a separate allocation to fund Charlie's expansion and/or deferred maintenance needs that he's identified. So I want to make sure people understand that that's a component. That would be also true for town IT in terms of any infrastructure, technology, infrastructure expansion that specifically would be for schools that would not be, that was not funded as part of our school portion of the, our IT expenses. So that net change was about 563,000, 64,000. So we're working, we have a working budget number of 130,843,000 against identified revenue of 127.7 million. So we're looking at a $3 million gap. And the difference of the 3 million and the 2.4 is the 563,000. So that's where our budget is to date, and we will have another update April 8th. And I really hoping that by April 8th, we have nailed down and can identify and report out all the positions that we're funding, where they are and what the FTEs are in the total cost. With that, Jim?
Yep, yep. Thank you, Mary Ellen. So again, our ongoing steps to, to closing the gap is to hold that class size. We determined to hold our average class size in the K8 schools at 19 per section. We've talked about this before. It allows for growth because we're not certain what's going to happen, particularly with international students. So we have room. And it's also important to keep the class size manageable, particularly coming back from the pandemic. High school is doing its ongoing analysis as well. And if there are areas where they can find reductions, they will. But not in a way that is going to stress out the high school in terms of class size, but just in terms of where there are natural places for reduction. They, they continue to scrub that, to try to identify that. But in light of reduced enrollments, we continue to work with principals and coordinators to review all programs for efficiency, alternative delivery models. We continue to review to see if there are areas of reduction because we are determined that if there are areas of reduction, to identify them and for the school committee to be able to understand that when, when the, when the budget is developed, it's, it's a budget that meets the needs of the district. And, and we should be able to identify and explain each of the requests and what the requests will do. So to do that, we have to continue to ask ourselves, is this, is there room for reduction here without compromising the program? And then we will continue, obviously, working with the town to identify other funding sources. I'm in communication with the town administrator, and we continue to work together. The rescue funds have really just been announced, so that there has been no decision or movement or even discussion really about the use of those funds, except that we are in partnership and we will remain in partnership. Can you move on, Mary Ellen? So we have some upcoming dates. So as Mary Ellen referenced, you know, we have this, the subcommittee. And with great appreciation to the school committee finance subcommittee, great, great appreciation for the effort that's happening with, with that subcommittee. Mariah, who's chairing that, is, we appreciate the amount of time that she's putting in to really ask the right kinds of questions. We're also, so that's April 6th, that's subcommittee also on May 13. The next school committee budget update is April 8th, which Mary Ellen referenced. And at that April 8th school committee meeting, we hope to have completed the work that I we hope to have completed the work that I referenced before and have more specifics around programs for the budget and where all of that rests. We also have meetings scheduled for the fifteenth and the twenty ninth. The advisory council presentation is April fifteenth. We need to be prepared to make a pretty detailed presentation to the advisory council and town meeting on May nineteen. That's day one where the school committee budget will be presented. So you can, you can see the budget updates at the website. And it's constantly updated and Mary Ellen keeps that current. So we have, and we have to have our program budget impact statements are on open gov. So that that's posted as well. That's going to be, that'll be available for all to see. So you may have questions about the snapshot of where we are right now. Want to take that down, Mary Ellen? Okay.
Okay, questions, comments? I see Helen, go right ahead, Helen.
So the town, I'm pretty sure in their budget for this year made across the board ten percent cuts in every department. Is that correct, Mary Ellen? And I assume it was us too. Everybody got a ten percent cut.
I know that there were cuts. I'm not sure. I know last year they were working on a ten percent cut. I don't know if that was for this year. I know.
I happened to listen to Select Board the other day and I heard the I T presentation and it was not operating on a ten percent cut. So maybe, I don't know if their overall budget is, but departmentally, which is how you framed it, they were not operating on cuts, even cuts on departments.
I think they were asked when to develop their budget way back in September to think about what would happen if they were asked for a ten percent cut.
I see.
I think that's the semantics that occurred now that I'm processing the question.
The thing I'm trying to to think through is whether the building department, Charlie's division, you know, with the buildings would get some increased funding from the town.
Not for the school councils, we're left whole.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
It's, it's, it is, there is an argument to be made around the American Rescue Plan that the infrastructure, their infrastructure needs of the department, school department, and should those infrastructure needs be funded through the American Rescue Plan funds? Considering that some of Charlie's and even Matt's things are kind of one time funding needs and can be so that you don't create a funding cliff.
Right.
So those are things I'm thinking about and trying to consider as a way to manage, you know, terminal funds, like, sorry for the word, but terminal funds, they're they're one time funds and you.
Yeah, no, that's much better. And also, in terms of the revenue gap from the two point four to the three million, you had that chart up there, maybe you could put it up. I just didn't catch. Is it the difference between what Charlie requested? No? Five hundred thousand.
The five hundred thousand, let me just show this quickly, is the net change of adding eight hundred plus to the personnel line and subtracting two hundred and seventy two from Charlie's line. So the five sixty three and the two four revenue gap equals the three million.
And that eight hundred and thirty six is for?
That's for staff that we currently have and principals are trying to place. So it does not include one year staffing positions that were hired as part of the R L A, but it is returning staff back. And we have some increase in staffing. In special education, we have, we added social workers. I'm just going to take this down. We added social workers as part of the budget at one per two hundred and fifty, which we have, we don't have, we have, we don't have that many social workers in the district. And we do not have the we're just starting to get resignations and retirements. So we had held back the the salary savings or turnover savings, whichever term you want to use. But that's only six hundred and seventy five thousand.
These.
The turnover savings or salary savings that we'd apply.
That would come off of the eight hundred thousand, more or less.
Yeah, potentially. Once we know what the top number is, then we would take that number off and reduce it.
Okay.
We just haven't hit the final.
And when do people, I know they can tell us up until June, but we ask them to tell us by when that if they're going to be retiring?
I thought it was mid February, but it's, they're just trickling in now.
And when?
And everyone that we take, that's the risk is everyone that we take. We have to make sure that we don't then take six hundred and seventy five again. Because, but we may want to take it just and not take the six seventy five and me, we may, we may want to take it just so that we know we have the savings, even though we'll still have people that turn over. But then that's just a cushion for the new superintendent to have to know that he's a little bit of a cushion coming into a pretty tight year, budget year.
Right. And when do we, just to remind me and maybe everybody else, in order, if there's a reduction force, when do we need to tell people by?
May fifteenth.
That's the new date or that's the?
That's the contractual date.
May fifteenth, okay.
Ideally, we would let them know before.
Sure, of course, of course. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? I had one, Mary Ellen. You had, we have down for the S R three, the three point six four one million in this entire budget, but as revenue, but it's good until September twenty twenty three. Would we not somehow split that money for twenty two and twenty three or? Twenty, yeah.
That would be a beautiful thing if we could split that money for twenty two and twenty three. I think that will depend on where we land with our staffing and our personnel, our personnel budgets and our sort of where we are and what trade offs and choices we will need to make.
And will we get additional money from the county or is that already considered in the American Rescue Plan?
Then I saw that notation myself and that I, I don't know. I think that's kind of an unknown at this point. Our county structure in Massachusetts is so small that we're versus the rest of the country. You know, I don't know more to come on that.
Thank you. Other questions, thoughts? Susan?
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for this. And obviously, it is sort of a fluid situation. I think we all, we all appreciate that. I mean, one thing that might be helpful is if either, not necessarily tonight, but if we just started to sort of think through some of our more sort of our priorities or our criteria for the kinds of things we would want to use this money for. Because I do quite seriously take the one time funds aspect of this and, you know, thirty four million dollars is a lot of money, regardless of how it's split up, let alone the Norfolk allocation, some of the other funds. So it does strike me that, you know, there are places where we do have one time needs. And we probably can start to think through not only the things we've talked about tonight, like the, you know, structured learning time or summer school or whatever some of those things may be if they're needed, but also, you know, questions about this is going to be a multi year thing. And so we're going to need potentially extended learning time over a couple of years, not just sort of one year, but it'll still be time delimited. We might need additional social workers over and above what we're getting in some of the other streams. We might need, you know, additional money for remote instruction this fall because, not because we're keeping the remote learning academy machinery going, but because you know, students are immunocompromised or because they get quarantined or whatever it is, we still need to be able to account for things like that. So again, not the whole thing, but but something. So I guess to my mind, we have revolving fund issues. We've got a bunch of things. So I guess it would be helpful to just maybe think through what our criteria would be and what kinds of things we would consider allocating this to you because we do have a fair number of of one time cleanup needs, everything that B F A C recommended, a lot of that analysis. So at any rate, I would just encourage us to to figure out the right time to do that.
Mariah?
I, I completely agree with Susan and I think that as we think about some of those things too, there's other areas. You know, including tech and equipment, which are good one time things. And so how we think about that. And of course, though, so many of these one time things, we have to just kind of land the budget as it sort of is and then go to those, to all those points that Susan's making, but it is a really important conversation and I'm glad that she brought it up.
Yeah, Jim?
I want to second that. I'm glad that you brought that up as well because I was thinking the same thing, Mariah, that not a hundred percent, but there may be things that are in the budget that we could look to see what that would mean in terms of if we, if we were to purchase those with the one time money and other items that are going to be baked into the budget. And what's the balance on that? So that's a really good heads up as we, as we meet to review this, we, we definitely will keep that as a priority. We should definitely do that. So thank you.
Yeah, Mariah?
Just one other point too, is that we also have to be looking not only to next year's operating budget, but looking multiple years out at future operating budgets without these cushions and how we bring ourselves back into alignment two or three years from now, as long as two or three years from now and maybe less, maybe as much as little as a year from now. So really making sure that we're converging back on sort of regular revenues is really important and that we have a plan for that as well.
Susan?
Yeah, just to, just to chime in on that, I think I was riffing. I shouldn't have been riffing. But but those were truly illustrative. I absolutely agree, Mariah, with tech and Jim with what you said. I mean, again, even if we kind of had some criteria that said they have, you know, we're going to prioritize things that are one time and discrete. We're going to prioritize things that were linked to COVID or and or advancing and already identified educational and operational priority. And, you know, would not leave us with a cliff, would not create a cliff. I'm not suggesting that those are the criteria.
Or worse than, worse than a cliff.
Exactly. So so that to the extent that we're adding, you know, staff time, it's done as stipends or it's done as a particular, you know, it's done in a time delimited way. So at any rate, that's, I think, I think this is great. It would be, it would be great to have this so that we can wrap our heads around it.
Yeah, David?
What is the approximate timetable in terms of when we would need to be able to articulate a clear plan for accessing some of these funds?
Soon. I, the application for the S R two funds for use of next year, we're right now, we're we're going through some technical challenges with getting the grant applied for, for the, for use in F Y twenty one for the tents. Hopefully, we'll have that resolved Monday, but the balance of the S R's two is, I believe, the end of April. So I will need to know kind of how we're spending, what the plan is and what we're putting on that grant for the S R's two funds. I don't have any information on the application deadline for the S R three funds. I imagine that will be May or June that we would have those. So certainly around town meeting. And and then it's going to be very explicit in terms of what is attached to those funds. And how that's going to be impacted in twenty three. What's going to be impacted in twenty three?
Helen?
So remind me again, the S R two needs to be spent by December, correct?
No, 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 no. S R two is spent by September of twenty three. S R one, S R one and the C V R F is all December of twenty two.
Okay, and the S R one we've spent, right?
We are well on our way to spending that.
Okay, and the S R two, that's the three million, correct?
No, the S R two is one point six.
One point six, sorry. And then the S R three is the three?
Point six.
Three point six, okay. I just wanted to, and that one needs to be spent by?
September of twenty three.
September of twenty three, along with the S R two?
Yep.
Okay, so basically it's five point two million over till September twenty three.
Yep, and the American Rescue Plan is December of twenty four. So that's into fiscal year twenty five halfway through.
Okay. And are we going to be, this application for the S R two, are we going to be discussing that at what is going to go for at the April sixth?
Probably, yes. Yes.
We'll have recommendations.
Is there a deadline, Mary Ellen, for S R two applications?
There is, and we're putting a application in by Monday for a portion of the funds. So my understanding is that there, why they did this, I'm not quite sure, but they did two application rounds, one for spending money in F Y twenty one and one for spending money in F Y twenty two. And I believe based on the training I was at, that has to do with starting a clock ticking of these twenty seven months that you get to spend federal money. So we're applying for only the money we are estimating we need for tents for fall, summer or spring, summer and fall. But we can do, always do an amendment once we have a decision around the whole body of the grant. For myself, I'm you, we can do an amendment to modify that. What modify that after? That's always possible. On the first round of money, we can do an amendment to change how that's spent. So, but if we don't get it in now, it's just quick and easy to do one amount, one account.
Yeah.
And get that done and then we'll amend later.
But we have to hit the deadline to.
I gotta hit the deadline. Otherwise, we have no money.
Okay. I think we're going to move on. So thank you for all of that. There's a lot there. Thank you, Mariah. I know you're working so hard behind the scenes to make all this happen. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And to your team on the finance, but you in particular. Yeah, Jim?
I, I, I just can't stop myself from saying it, that the, the budget subcommittee, when Susan Wolf Ditkauf was chair and all the work that happened there and segueing over to Mariah, who's been enormously helpful as well, I, I, I can't state strongly enough how the conversations behind the scenes are. They're pushing, they're exacting, they're, let's focus on the right stuff and moving the whole process forward in and probably I'm going to say a very wholesome, appropriate way that it gets everybody behind the scenes going. And these are large amounts of money coming in from the federal government and going through the the town and the state. There are rules and regulations and we've got the pandemic that's now hopefully passing and the R L A and reassigning people and getting the right people in place and holding on to as much staff as we can hold on to and supplies and materials and equipment that's been woefully underfunded over the last few years and taking the gestalt of all of that and trying to make sense of it is an enormous, enormous task. And I just think people, Susan and now Mariah, we owe a debt to the people will never know because it's all behind the scenes. And so we just, we should express appreciation and we'll come back April eighth with more, with the more definitive look at the budget because I know there's going to want to be some, some discussion. Susan, you referenced it, but tonight's not the night. The E S C, you referenced that. So there'll be time to have that conversation too. Don't worry, there'll be time to have that conversation. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, Susan.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. I'm going to move on and I want to get Anthony and Hal a chance to answer a couple of our questions so that they can then leave. Have a night. So I think we had, Michelle, did you, you have in mind what some of those questions might be?
So I think just a little bit of clarity around the shifts that are being made in the schedule moving into as students are coming back. that are being made in the schedule moving into, as students are coming back. I think that was some clarity that you were looking for. I think I'll stop there. I know I had responded to Mariah's question and said I was going to punt it to you.
Happy to speak to that, Suzanne, and Michelle, and everybody. Happy to speak to our efforts to increase in-person learning and that process, because I imagine there are questions about that, questions about outdoor space. So whatever, whatever you all have, we're here. We're sorry we're late. We inducted 188 members of the class of 2021 into NHS tonight. So a really wonderful event, especially given the last year-plus that the seniors have experienced. So what would be most helpful, Suzanne?
Well, I think there are a couple of questions in particular we had. First of all, we want to, first of all, we want to thank you for picking a date like April 8th, and looking like you're moving towards that to bring people back. That's a wonderful surprise in ways. So thank you for that. We want to make sure that includes ninth graders. Does that?
Absolutely does. Thank you. So, you know, I think the lingering question, when we, I think we're last here, talking about increasing in-person student learning, that was over February break, and we rapidly in March moved to bring almost 400 students into in-person learning at 115 Greeno Street. But we're certainly, it was hard to bring students into O L S, given how many kids were already there and distancing. So thanks to the school committee and the B U and those distancing negotiations, we're ready to bring, or will be ready, I should say, a bunch of ninth graders back and a bunch of 10th through 12th graders. So it absolutely includes O L S, and that is work that we're doing now and moving forward in preparation for, as you said, Suzanne, Thursday, April 8th. We imagine, you know, we've heard Hal so far from, of our families, more than 800. Is that safe?
Yeah, 850 approximately so far have responded to our survey. So, and we'll keep pushing that out through next Tuesday. So that's the responses, and, you know, people are coming back. We're going to have, so far, it's trending at about 85% in-person, 15% remote.
Wow, that's a huge change, isn't it?
Huge change, yeah. But, and that's on top of kids coming now back five days a week, as opposed to being in two days a week. So it's going to be, you know, we've experienced a pretty radical change at 115 over the past few weeks. We've invited back 400 students into our four-day-a-week cohort, but this will be a real sea change. So, you know, O L S and ninth grade is a real challenge. That building has some physical limitations. We've been working with Matt and getting some tents, and thanks to people that have been working behind the scenes to help us get tents there, because it's really important for us there. The, you know, the rooms are one challenge. We have some furniture issues. We're going to be doing a little bit of gymnastics there. Anthony and I are going over there tomorrow to walk the building and look at some of the challenges that are over there. But lunch, as you're experiencing in the K eight, lunch is going to continue to be a challenge. You know, not so much of a challenge if the weather's nice. But I, you know, I only have good weather karma for graduation. So I cannot expend that karma on the rest of the school year. If I could, I would, but I'm not allowed to do that only on graduation. So, you know, we're concerned about what we're going to do on implement weather days, and we're, Janay Utaro and I are devising a schedule, and we were talking about it today, about how we'll change our lunch schedule for implement weather days, so that we can manage that safely at six feet of distance in the building.
And make, oh, go ahead, Suzanne, sorry.
No, I was going to ask a different question. So if you, did you want to follow up on that?
Well, I was going to just segue to what are we doing with our schedule, because I think that's the question.
I was going to ask you, yeah.
Perfect. Seems like a good segue. So thanks to Michelle for being the first responder on concerns and complaints about student learning time. In general, right now, we are working on a schedule that we will implement after April break. So we're not going to share it tonight. It is still in development and getting feedback from our coordinators, and then eventually from our larger faculty. But the couple of, I think, key important pieces are that Wednesdays, which have been remote, as everyone knows, across the district, and certainly at the high school, beginning after April break. So on Wednesday, 4/28, that will be an in-person learning day with a 12:15 dismissal still, but that will be with an in-person schedule. So even though we're going in on Thursday, the 8th, we're retaining Wednesday, April 7th, and Wednesday, April 14th as a remote learning, remote learning days, making the transition, giving everyone a little bit more time for the transition. So we'll certainly maximize in-person learning time. On Wednesdays, Hal is working on reducing mask breaks, which have been 15 minutes long to support health and safety practices and protocols. We believe that 10 minutes should be sufficient, especially as we optimize outdoor space. So we win back some time there. And why I'm talking about the schedule and not having Hal talk about the schedule is another matter, frankly. But I think the other piece is, we have this year had two, what we call T blocks, which supports our advisory and hub programs, as well as two X blocks, which really supports clubs and students getting extra help. We are likely eliminating one of those X blocks to maximize instructional time and student learning time. Hal, since you're the real expert cooking up the schedules in the lab, would you add more to those pieces?
Not really, no. I mean, we, like I said, like Anthony said, we're working on a couple of different schedules that we will roll out for that week after the vacation. But, you know, in terms of the time on learning, we have submitted along the way to the state, and the state's changed their recommendations or their guidance along the way. Changed in January, we had to resubmit and update our numbers. You know, we didn't know at the beginning of the year, when we first, the first submission that we did to the state called for us to submit what time is synchronous learning time and what time is asynchronous learning time. And this was really before we started back in person. And so we were just estimating what it was going to be. And the reality is that it turned out that the time that we had, the 80-minute classes that we had, turned out to be all in-person time. When we were planning over the summer through September, we were thinking, oh, no one's going to teach for 80 minutes. It'll probably be 40 minutes of teaching and 40 minutes of asynchronous time, and we reported as such to the state in the early fall. And the reality is that that's not the way teachers use the time. Teachers, when they had students in their class, were doing synchronous learning, both with the students in front of them and with the students who were remote and coming in on Zoom, whether they were in the remote cohort or in the other half of the hybrid. And so when the state came back, middle of the year, probably in February, we updated those numbers. And as Anthony said, now we're cutting back some of the passing time. We're cutting back, we're changing the way we're looking at the Wednesday, and so we'll have longer classes on Wednesday. And so the time on learning now will be in excess of what the state has required of us.
I think I'd just say, I think we recognize that it's maddening for our faculty and staff to shift the schedule again, probably hard on students and on families. And yet now is the opportunity for us to capture more instructional time and to support teachers and support students in the end. So we've previewed that that will be the case for families and certainly for staff. We're getting feedback now, and imagine well before April break, sharing what that schedule will be and doing the same sorts of communications that we sent out in the middle of this week, translated, and posting it wherever we can, so that people are aware of those changes.
Thank you so much. Other questions or comments? Before we let Anthony and Hal go, Mariah?
I just have one question, just to be super clear, to make sure I understood. So the ninth graders, there's definitely, like, if there will be all of them coming back, who want to come back?
I think, to be perfectly honest, I'm worried a little bit about space in some of those rooms, but I think that is why we are going to scour all spaces and figure out how, you know, we're now getting a sense that 85% of our students, at least to this date, have opted for all-in. And so we have some classrooms that have been flagged and that we need to examine, and we're making some classroom shifts. So our deep hope and plan is to have everybody back who wants to be back. And that's what we're working on. I think if you hear hesitancy, it's because we have such a great deal of interest at the ninth grade, and as we should. So we are going to be getting creative likely with spaces, and those outdoor spaces that we've pegged for lunches and mask breaks could support instruction as well, depending.
Any other questions or comments? Susan?
I just want to say thank you to both of you, to the entire staff at the high school who is working so hard to make this happen. Just, I don't know about the rest of the school committee members. I assume you all are getting pinged by people in other districts as well. And, you know, other high schools are not where we are, really not where we are. And we're getting asked, I'm getting asked, how is Brookline doing it? You know, you guys have no space. You have too many kids. You have a construction project. You don't have a field. And I was like, well, because we have great people. But it's really, really hard, and we're just grateful for all the effort that you guys are putting in to make all the Tetris pieces fit together.
A lot of credit to Matt and panel four for all the recommendations, and really leading on getting those recommendations to us and getting the ventilation. Having the ventilation at five air exchanges in all of those classrooms really makes it something that we see as viable.
Okay. I think, I think you're off duty at last. So thank you so much for coming by after a very long day. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your support. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great evening.
Yep, you too. Everybody else stay put. Okay, we're moving on. We want to talk about public hearings for the annual town meeting warrant articles. I think we're going to ask policy to do that. David, are you up for that, to take a first pass?
Yes, that's correct, and we've already scheduled an extra meeting of the policy subcommittee. We're going to be convening this Monday evening at 5 o'clock to address potential warrant articles of relevance to the schools. We will then make some recommendations for the full school committee with respect to which warrant articles we think are relevant to the schools, at which point the school committee can, we would then decide collectively which ones we want to take up. And then there would be some public hearings regarding those warrant articles, probably for our meeting on the 15th, possibly on the 8th. I have invited petitioners for the various warrant articles to attend our meeting on the 29th and present their warrant articles or answer questions from subcommittee members. And some of them have already responded to me that they would be interested in participating on that meeting, the 29th. I think we will have a mix of some brief presentations along with availability for a question-and-answer session. So far, it hasn't been an overwhelming number of petitioners who've requested time to address the subcommittee. So I am optimistic that we'll be able to accommodate just about any of the petitioners who would like to explain to us why they would like the school committee to take a position on their warrant article.
And I've also asked David to look into the role of the school resource officers that has come up during the conversation with the select board and in town. So, David?
Yes, that's going to be part of the agenda for our regular April 12th meeting. I have already invited several members of the Reimagining Police Task Force to participate in that meeting. Select Board member Dr. Rell Fernandez has agreed to attend that meeting. Malcolm Cawthorn will also be a part of that meeting. I've invited school resource officers, a lot of people. Some have already answered, some have not. But I'll continue to reach out to the various stakeholders to participate. I anticipate it'll be an introductory meeting in terms of providing a context for why the school resource officer issue is important, and to hear different visions for how to move forward. I'm also hopeful that there will be representation from the principals or some school officials who can explain how the school resource officer program has been working in the past and in the present.
Okay, we've got hands and hands and hands. Barbara, Andy, Jim, and Helen. Barbara, go ahead.
I just have a question for David. On the question of the school resource officers, have you invited people from both of the panels that are working on the reimagining of the police force? I think that's an important thing to do.
I have, yes. I've been inviting members from both groups. So far, I'm hearing more from one side than the other, but I'll continue to engage in that outreach.
Good, thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, my question is, who are the ultimate decision-makers about this, about the SROs? Is it us? Is it the select board?
It appears that it's the select board, because the select board, they are also the police commissioners. So it's ultimately going to be their decision. However, they would like our input, and I appreciate that they want to involve us, since the school resource officer program obviously is something of tremendous relevance to the schools. Okay.
Jim?
I just wanted to inform you, David, if you haven't received an email already, that I spoke with all the principals, and three principals would like to be a part of that discussion with you, high school and two of the K eight schools. So I'm sure you'll get any, if it's not in your inbox now, I'm sure you'll get it tomorrow morning.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Helen?
So on a different topic, one of the warrant articles, Susan actually brought it to my attention. Warrant Article 40, which I wasn't familiar with, about BIG, Brookline. I still want to call it Brookline Access TV. Corbin, you can correct me. I can't remember what the new acronym stands for. Anyways, and there, it's not clear to me what that is about, and I, it may be something that affects us since they have the third floor of the Unified Arts Building.
So Warrant Article 40 is one of the articles I've identified of potential relevance to the schools. It's something that we, it's one of the articles that we will be discussing at the March 29th meeting.
Great. I'll plan to be, are you going to do that one first, maybe?
I could, if you'd like, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Oh, Susan?
Thank you. This sounds great, David. Just on the school resource officers, it may be helpful, there's a lot of documentation on that issue. Not only did Malcolm Cawthorn put together an extensive report, but there's also a document to Andy's question that the superintendent, one of the prior superintendents signed. It was not something the school committee signed, but it was something the superintendent signed. And so I think it's just important for us to be aware of that. Many of us weren't. And so if, to whatever extent there is, like, pre-read materials for that one, or if there are particular things that Dr. Fernandez or Mr. Cawthorn can sort of point us to, in terms of extensive discussions they've had already, that might be one where, if we can just do a little bit of pre-reading, it would make the conversation a lot more sophisticated and productive for us, because they have been discussing this in a lot of depth for quite a while.
Along those lines, Deborah Brown contacted me with a lot of background materials. So I'll definitely be including some of those as we approach that Monday meeting.
Great. And I don't know where that document, the superintendent document is, but if we can get ahold of that, that would be great, too.
Yeah, Mary Ellen, and then Jim?
Just to extend to David, I just sent you an email. As the emergency response coordinator for the district, I do an extensive amount of work with school resource officers and the police department. So people have not contacted me yet, so I'd love to have a conversation with you. And there are additional materials that I probably have that would also be helpful, as well as multi-district experience with the position and how it's evolved in the police department world over time. So happy to help and assist. And the M O U, I believe, it has to be posted on our website. So it should be on our website somewhere, and it's a requirement of the district attorney, Norfolk District Attorney, actually, all the district attorneys, to have the superintendent and the police chief have a M O U. So that was hashed out when I first got here, and took a few years for it to actually get signed. MOU. So that was hashed out when I first got here and took a few years for it to actually get signed. So have some background in the history of the development of that as well.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Jim?
I was just going to say, I'll, I'll forward the, the MOU to school committee. So you'd be certain that you have it. And also, David, what is the date and time of the meeting you're going to have?
So for the school resource officer meeting, that will be April twelfth at five P M.
At, at what time? I'm sorry?
Five P M.
Five? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Is that a dedicated meeting just to that, David, or is that on the agenda for many things?
That will very likely be at least the dominant agenda. Possible, we'd have something like voting the minutes and maybe one other brief item. Overall, focus will be school resource officers.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to, and thank you, David, and the policy, policy subcommittee for stepping, stepping up and doing all this work for us. So we're going to go to subcommittee and liaison reports. Who has a report to, to tell us about? Jennifer?
At our recent meeting, we had the three panels come and give us presentations. The meeting was recorded. So those of you who would like to find out more information, it was a really nice summary. The materials are also posted on the Public Schools of Brookline website under the school committee page, under the ad hoc task force on remote learning. You can get all the expert advisory panel meetings and presentations at that location. Panel one came and talked with us as well as panel two and panel three. And the meeting before that, we talked about summer programs. And so again, that meeting was taped and there was a lot of good information. We talked about the Star Academy, which is the English Language Education and Metco Combined Program. That will be running, that's for K eight and will serve at this point about a hundred and eighty students. And we talked about the budget for that. We talked about the calculus project. That will be running this summer. They're part of their summer program as part of the larger program. We heard from Brendan Cobus at the high school who talked about their program. They're going to be running a hybrid program. The calculus project, I believe, and the Star Academy will be in person. Project Discovery will be at Runkle School, and that is an E, an English Language Arts program that's going to be focused on K two. And then we heard tonight some more update about the three, five, six, eight, and then sort of like access for other groups of students outside of that as well. We will be meeting, we have two meetings that are scheduled in April. The next meeting, we will be focusing on a summer school follow-up as well as extended school year and additional information about, well, Casey already addressed some of this tonight as well, extended school year and compensatory services. Sorry, I couldn't come up with the word. And then the meeting after that will be coming back to the essential curriculum work that we've been talking about and some work on child study teams as well. Thanks.
That's the curriculum committee. So thank you, Jennifer, subcommittee. Anyone else have a report?
I do. Sorry, I don't know why I'm, sorry about that.
Go ahead, Helen.
Sorry. The capital improvements met a few weeks ago, but as an update, the from last week's meeting, when we talked about the leases for the schools for children, the extended day program for the BEEP program, my understanding is that many of the questions that Mariah and David had were answered and that Suzanne, you've signed the lease agreement with them. So, so that's moving forward. Beep parents can be assured that they have extended day and to my, best my understanding, Regina's informed them of that so that they can make their decisions in an orderly fashion for next year. Also, the peer schools have been busy, the building committee, well, the the building committee and meetings with the community. So there was a community visioning meeting about a week ago, along with a smaller sustainability meeting that included Climate Action Brookline and included the Transportation Board attended it and one other board that right now I'm blocking on. Some of the people from Parks and Rec were there too, to look at sustainability issues. And it was actually a very interesting meeting about what, what our hopes and dreams are for the building project at the peer school. We'll be working now on the, or the principal will be, it's not a, we, this is the royal, we, the principal will be working on the education plan. And the architects will be working on getting the list of spaces that we have. We, we're going off of what we already have, both the education plan for Driscoll and, and Ridley, along with the space allocations from both to make sure it's an equitable building. Not necessarily the same, but equitable in terms of the needs of the peer school. So that's exciting. I think that's about, and the tents, Mary Ellen, are in the process of being ordered, correct? Okay, and, and will we have enough for the, no?
No, Matt, Matt's still trying to chase down the number. He sent an update late this afternoon that where he was able to get, I think, half of the tents that have been requested and he's looking for another vendor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you for identifying a place to get the monies from to, to pay for it. I appreciate it.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to sort of do a little liaison report quickly before I, before we get much farther in, in our agenda of our evening. Tomorrow, I've received information from Baffin and other community groups. There's going to be a vigil held tomorrow, Friday, March twenty-sixth at four P M., led by BHS students and alumni with community speakers. That's open to all Brookline members. It will be in person at the BHS steps at one fifteen Greenow at four o'clock and streamed virtually as well. And I just wanted to sort of draw attention. We've, we've all received information from Baffin about concrete steps to support Asian American Pacific Islander students and to address anti-Asian racism. So we can just, you know, discuss those as items another time as well, under new business.
Thank you. Helen?
I also have a liaison from, it's not called BEEP Connections anymore. It has a different name, but it's the, the Community Group Advisory Council for Early Childhood that meets quarterly now. It is the most amazing group of people, all of whom work with the early childhood community. So included in that group is the library, the parent-child home program, the, our, our BEEP people. I'm just trying to go around some. It's just a, an amazing group of people, the Brookline Mental Health Center. I'm trying to think some of the others, but anyways, they all, it's, it's, it's a wonderful meeting to go to because everybody's working together for the best interests of kids and families. And it, it just, it's a great program. And you know what I might do is ask them to send invitations to people who might be available the next time, just to come and listen. I think, I think you guys would really enjoy it of how a community can get together and, and work together to, for the best interests of, of kids and families.
Thank you, Helen. Mariah, did you want to say something?
I just had a quick question. The funding that had been shifted in the S R two money, the hundred and fifty thousand for tents, does that reflect the partial order that you referred to or an estimate of the total amount? You're on mute, Mary Ellen.
Partial, just what we've, what we're committing for the spring until we can have a discussion, longer discussion.
Okay, but Helen said, like, the tents that have been found so far, Matt's looking for another vendor. Is that another vendor still for the spring to complete that order?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute, can I just sort of ask that question again? Because I think what Mariah was saying is, how much are the tents going to cost us?
Hundred and fifty for the spring.
Yeah, for the spring, they were less than what they were for the fall.
No, but I guess my question is, is that hundred and fifty number going to grow if he finds another vendor?
Potentially.
If he finds another vendor?
They're in demand, so potentially it's a ballpark. I'm, to just sort of the, for the grant and this middle of the grant, I'm, I've put into the grant the estimate he gave me for spring, summer and, and next fall of twenty-one.
Okay.
That's what I did in the grant, but that's not what I'm showing on the budget because we haven't had the full discussion around the grant. But I need to get it, I need to, there are like three pieces all happening to happen at the same time.
So they would leave up those tents that we order for the most part in the places where we ordered them?
Only for the summer programs? So if we, if Lincoln, Runkle and Ridley have, and the high school have summer school and students in tents, we would, I, I said to Matt, you know, talk to them about just keeping those tents up through the summer. Because they'll need them for the summer programs. And so he needs to follow up with the vendor to make sure that can happen. And then he needs to have another vendor for additional tents.
Okay.
So by the, our next meeting, we'll have, next finance subcommittee meeting, we'll have a lot more details on the cost.
Okay. Thank you. Do we, any other reports, report outs? Jennifer?
I'm sorry, I just, I feel like I was not enthusiastic enough in my liaison update regarding supporting our, our Asian community here at Brookline and across the country. It's just a very somber time, so it's a somber message delivered, but I really want to encourage people to attend if they're able. So just felt like my enthusiasm wasn't sufficient to the cause.
Thank you, Jennifer. Susan?
I just want to underscore Jennifer's point, I think, not, not about her not being enthusiastic, but in, in in the last meeting, which was not televised, the school, which after some of the more, you know, problem, really upsetting, disturbing, racist, unacceptable events, we had a school committee meeting, which was not televised. And so it may be that people think that we did not sit, talk about it or, or speak about it, but we did. We also spoke about the superintendent's letter that he sent with the head of Baffin, Chi Chi Wu, and the Brookline Asian American Family Network and the head of the Brookline Educators Union, Dr. Jessica Wondershebo. So just thank you to, to Jim for, for making that happen. I think that was a really important statement. And so other boards in town are making their own statement, at least from my perspective. You know, Jim is our superintendent, so that, that was a statement. I don't know if there's interest in another statement from the school committee. I would just underscore what Jennifer said about attending tomorrow at four o'clock and also what she said about finding a way to dock it, this question, because and in, in addition to statements, making sure that we speak about it in the budget process and we speak about it when we talk about allocations and new positions, I think is just really important. So maybe what we can do is figure out when we're going to talk about it and maybe respond back and let people know that that's coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Any new business? If not, I am going to move to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A for the following purposes. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent, non-aligned personnel. And purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, B E U, Unit A, Unit B, and paraprofessionals. And Ask Me School Food Services, Brookline Educational Secretaries Association, Building Services employees. And to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigations at Co Collaborative. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Helen. We'll take a vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And we will not be coming back to open session when we are done.
Five minutes before the next meeting starts, since we're a little early.
Oh, my gosh, really? Okay, okay. Five minutes. I'll see you here at nine twelve on the other side. We have to go to our executive session.
Thank you.